Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody and everybody behind that placard there that I can't see tonight to the August 1st meeting of the St. Mary's County Planning Commission. There are sign-up sheets out in the foyer this evening. One is a sign-up sheet if you're speaking in this hearing, and the other is a sign-in sheet for attendees of, just for attendees of these hearings. In case any further information needs to be sent to you regarding the cases, please sign up on one of these sheets. Our meeting this evening is being recorded for the public record. Any comments made by anyone present must be recorded as part of the record. Therefore, if you have anything to say, you must come up to one of the microphones provided. Your comments cannot be recorded and placed in the record unless they are directed to a microphone. You are to direct your statements, questions, and responses to the board only, and we will direct them to the appropriate person for an answer. Please keep your comments to five minutes or less. Anyone testifying or asking questions during our public hearings will be required to take an oath, and I thank you for your cooperation. Let's see. On our agenda this evening, after approval of the July 11th minutes, our first, we'll have a public hearing, will be first this evening, and that is for CSP 21-0202 for the First Colony Pod Five Restaurant and Apartments Concept Site Plan. Following that, we have a discussion to go over the text 22-0007 for the First Colony Pod Five PUD Agreement, or Amendment, I'm sorry, following by German. At this time, I'll let the board members introduce themselves, starting with Mr. St. Clair.
Joe St. Clair.
William Hall.
Patty Robrecht.
Howard Thompson.
Joe Van Kirk.
Joe Fazekas.
Emerald Evans.
Okay, also with us this evening, from the Department of Land Use and Growth Management, we have their director, Mr. Bill Hunt. Creative Coordinator Kimberly Wood is with us. Also from the county staff, we have John Hauser as our Assistant County Attorney. Mr. Jim Gotch is the Director of the Department of Public Works and Transportation. Kristi Hollander is here for the Metcom. Chris Castilemus is here. He's the Director of Economic Development. And Amy Carter is our video media producer this evening. Did everybody have a chance to review the July 11th minutes? Any corrections, additions, or deletions? Have a motion to accept?
So moved.
I have a motion from Mr. St. Clair, and I have a second by Ms. Robrecht. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
A stand.
Okay. Thank you, sir. For the other hearings, I'll be doing a roll call vote. Okay. First case this evening. Let's bring this up. First case this evening is Concept Site Plan Number CSP 21-0202 for First Colony PUD, Pod Five Apartments Restaurant and Restaurant. The owner is Marcas LLC, and their action requested this evening is a review of a concept site plan for a six-story apartment building at 176,904 square feet with 221 dwelling units, a three-and-a-half-story townhome-style apartment building that's 26,957 square feet with 12 dwelling units, and a 5,977 square-foot restaurant. Okay, all persons testifying this evening will have to take an oath, so at this time, I'll ask whoever's planning on testifying, making statements, coming up and asking questions or anything, if you'd stand at this time, and I'll get everybody sworn in. Raise your right hand. Do you declare and affirm under the penalty of perjury that the testimony, responses, and statements you may give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. And I'll be asking, as you come up this evening, if I did get to swear in, because I can't see everybody that's behind the screen here. Okay. Mr. Hunt, you taking care of this this evening?
Yes, sir.
Well, we got the top of the line. Here we go.
Thank you very much. Bill Hunt, Director of Department of Land Use and Growth Management, to introduce the case tonight. The location, 231-51 FDR Boulevard in California. The chairman's already read what we're here for, review of a concept site plan for a six-story apartment building, 221 dwelling units, a 3.5-story townhome with 12 dwelling units and a 6,000-square-foot restaurant. There will be an underground parking garage for approximately 331 vehicles, and the restaurant clubhouse will be built on the ground floor of the apartment building. Here's an aerial that shows the location of the property here in the blue-green. The land use is mixed-use medium intensity. The zoning is also medium-intensity mixed-use, and it is a PUD. The uses that are being proposed are dwelling units, multifamily, which is use number 16 and is described in the zoning ordinance as a single structure that contains fewer more dwelling units. The classification includes structures called apartments or condominiums. The restaurant, use type 73, obviously serves food. You can have outside dining. Most of the food is prepared for consumption on the premises, and if alcoholic beverages are sold, the receipts have to be 50 percent, there has to be greater than 50 percent of the gross receipts are for food rather than for beverages. The purpose of the medium-intensity mixed-use zoning district is to create large-scale and clustered commercial and residential uses, have uses adjacent to existing or planned principal transportation corridors, and allow for provisions of mixed-use non-residential developments and mixed-use residential developments, which has already been described as being the case that we're looking for tonight. According to the comprehensive plan, Lexington Park is a development district. It's the primary growth center in St. Mary's County, in addition to the town of Lender Town. It's to be urban in pattern and form and designed for intensive residential, commercial, and industrial development, supported by provision of community facilities and services. In this case, they're not looking for any industrial uses, but they are looking to have some intense residential and commercial uses on the property. The public hearing for this, I'm sorry, the public hearing notice was published back in March, 25th and April 1st. The case has been continued several times, with each time that's been continued, it's been to a date and time certain. The agenda was posted on the St. Mary's County website on April 5th, 2022. Public notification requirements have been met. The Technical Evaluation Committee reviewed this project in November of 2021. St. Mary's County Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance requires the use of, as far as allowing the uses, the use of multifamily and restaurant are permitted uses in the medium-intensity mixed-use zoning district and in the PUD, as has already been stated. The Planning Commission is required by the ordinance to make certain findings. They are that the proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan and applicable functional plan, that it may be served by adequate public facilities, that it will promote the health, safety, and welfare of the general public, that it has adequately developed recreational and community amenities, and is consistent with Chapter 62 design The outstanding issue, as the commissioners are well aware, is that along with this concept site plan, there needs to be a minor amendment to the PUD, which you'll be hearing later this evening as well, and then there must be SHA approval for all improvements along MD4. And we have the traffic consultant to speak of that tonight, too. That's the presentation on this first case from me. Are there any questions before we turn it over to the applicant's attorney, Mr. Longmore?
Anybody have any questions, staff? Mr. Hauser, you mind if I bring you up here for a second? I just want to explain further what Mr. Hunt was just talking about with us changing the around, doing the concept first.
I'll do my best.
It's been discussed even at the very first hearing that we had upon review. Because of all the questions that would have been asked during the amendment, every question that we would ask during the amendment is going to be in the concept plan. So it was determined at that time that we would bring this, turn this around so we could get the concept plan. Of course, if we do the amendment afterwards, it's at their risk, you know, that the amendment might not pass, which we'll get to that point when we get to that point. But the concept was changed so that we could ask the thorough questions that we were going to have to ask anyway for that amendment during the concept part of this hearing.
Mr. Chairman, that's correct. You stated everything correctly. If the members of the Planning Commission recall, this came up for its minor site, minor amendment to the PUD a few months ago. And the amendment concerns the number of maximum units that would be allowed in the PUD. Questions were raised how, what sort of plan could fit the requested increase in amendments. So the thought was that the way to get those details, the way to, you know, hang flesh on the bones there was to bring the concept site plan before the commission first. As at the applicant's request, the department, my office, had no objections to it. It's just a weird little procedural irregularity that you are hearing a concept site plan first that is predicated upon successful passage of a amendment to the PUD that has not yet been granted. A bit of a distinction without a difference, and if a lawyer is telling you that, it really is a distinction without a difference, but that's just the odd procedural way we got here tonight, to have the concept site plan ahead of that amendment. But to be clear, if the concept site plan is going to effect, and if you were to happen to vote to approve it tonight, you have got to vote to approve the amendment as well after this. And that could receive no additional testimony. It could just be a quick, simple motion vote accordingly, but that has got to be done to close out the concept site plan tonight. Any questions based upon that, Mr. Chairman?
You said that much more eloquently than I could, John. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you, John. Okay. Who's going to talk to us from the, from this side? Good evening, Mr. Longmore.
Good evening. Members of the Commission, nice to see you this evening. Chris Longmore here. I'm representing the developer of the project, Signet Contracting and FDR Development LLC. Marcas LLC is the owner of the PUD. My client's the developer and contract purchaser. I'd like to, first of all, introduce the members of our team that'll speak to you tonight and share a little bit of what we'll do, and then I'll jump in with a brief introduction. Mark Higgs is here as the representative from Signet Contracting. He will be presenting as part of our primary presentation. Jay Hobson is the engineer on the project that will present the concept site plan and walk through the details of that. Again, that'll be part of our presentation. Alan Hansen and Al Storm are here from DBI Architects. They will speak both to the mixed-use nature of the project and then also the architectural features that have been developed to date on the project.
Chris, what was, what was the name of the second gentleman that you said?
It was Alan Hansen and Al Storm.
And they are from?
From DBI Architects. And then the final member of our team is Jackie Chandler, who I know you all know from the traffic group, who will be presenting the traffic information relating to the project. At the outset, I just want to say a couple of comments, and then I'll start, start running through our presentation. One of the things I think that Planning Commission members, you'll see tonight, is that there'll be more information presented to you with this site plan than probably a traditional site plan. My client was in attendance at the minor PUD amendment hearing that occurred earlier. He heard your, your kind of concerns and some of the questions, so we're going to try to address all of them this evening. The other reason why I think you'll hear more is that in the years that I've been doing this, there's been a lot of push, both in the county and in other areas of the state and nationwide, to press for what's called mixed-use development. And it's an important concept and development. It preserves land in a lot of ways. It allows you to have commercial and residential, sometimes office, all combined in one site. And that is a great use of area within areas like our development districts where you want the development concentrated. I've sat through many planning sessions and talked to multiple directors, both Mr. Hunt and ones before him, that that's been a strong desire of them to see more of that in our county, given how we have grown over the years. I don't recall ever seeing a project like this that can really directly meet those goals the way this one does. So we are going to speak a little bit about the nature of that mixed-use development, just to share with you kind of our thoughts and some of our experts' thoughts on that. A couple of small things to, the other, I guess, big point I'd like to make at the beginning, and you'll hear more about this as we go. As you know, this project is within an existing plan unit development, First Colony. And that plan unit development has been around a couple decades now, I believe, probably a little longer than that. One of the aspects of that development, and it's in the record, and I believe Ms. Chandler will probably speak to it a little bit, is that there is a recorded adequate public facilities agreement relating to the entire PUD, relating to traffic. And what that agreement said was that the developers of the plan unit development had, I believe, six or seven improvements they had to build, and if they did that, there'd be a certain number of trips allocated to this plan unit development, like other plan unit developments in our county. There are still more than adequate trips avail, all those improvements have been built, and Ms. Chandler will walk through what they were. There are more than adequate trips available for the number of trips that'll be generated by this project. So we believe that, in speaking with the county attorney's office and the Department of Public Works and Land Use and Growth Management, we believe everybody is in agreement with that, that traffic APF has really already been met for this project if it meets the other requirements of the concept site plan approval. Now, I say that, but one of the things that, reasons I'm really excited about this project is that I have a client that's here tonight that, while recognizing that, that they've met the, the language of the ordinance, and they've already met APF, he's going to be proffering traffic improvements that add up to over $1 million to still improve traffic. We don't think that's required under the ordinance, but he came to that with a willingness, and I shared with him from appearing in front of you often, that this commission does not look merely for the minimum that can be done, but wants to see traffic improve when there's other developments. So you're going to see an applicant here tonight that is not waiting for you to suggest things, but is coming to you with improvements that are not required under the ordinance, but we think it'll make it a much better project. So we're excited about that part of the project as well. So with that, I'll jump into our slides to start introducing, introducing the project. If we can go to the next slide, Bill. So this is, some of these have been covered, I think, by Mr. Hunt and his staff report. You can see here just a photo of a map of the county with a location of where the property is located. Again, it's in the Lexington Park Development District, which is slated as a growth area. It also has a plan unit development, PUDX overlay on it, and it is part of the First Colony Plan Unit Development. If we can go to the next one, Bill. This is a little closer zoom from the county GIS map. You can see the PUDX that is First Colony, and then there's another PUD or two immediately to the right of that on this photo, so you can see the overlay there. So that is the zoning overlay on the property. If we go to the next slide. This slide kind of demonstrates, you know, generally where this is located. You can see those two purple dots in the upper left-hand corner of this slide. It shows they're proposing to put this mixed-unit development, again, a combination of residential and restaurant uses, showing you how in close proximity it is to other businesses. And that's why we think this will be a really good place to locate this type of residential development with a restaurant that is right where we want it, within the development district where there are other businesses. If we go to the next slide, this is just a kind of zoomed-up version showing some of the other businesses that are nearby, what we're proposing, and some other uses like the church across the street. It shows some of the other uses within the First Colony Plan Unit Development, as well as other ones that I know many of the members are familiar with, along Route 235, our major commercial corridor in the, in the county. If we go to the next slide, these are just some slides showing some existing conditions, and then a couple of renderings to introduce you to the project, and then the experts will be able to share with you a lot more of the details. This is the existing garden-style apartments that are located within the PUD immediately adjacent to the site my client is proposing tonight. If we go to the next slide, this is showing you FDR Boulevard going toward Route 4. In the upper left-hand corner is where we're proposing our project tonight. You can see the backside of one of the tire centers there on the right, just to give you some bearings, and one of the entrances in the backside of the portion of the PUD that has the BJ's store in it. If we go to the next slide, this is a rendering of what the type of apartments will look like. And again, it'll be just adjacent to the existing garden-style apartments. And I'll let the architects speak better to this. You can see the apartments are on the upper level. There will be parking underneath the units, so it will not be kind of a sea of asphalt, like we've heard on a lot of projects. There will be some outdoor parking, so the six levels will include parking as well. So you can see the design of that. If we go to the next slide, this again shows you some of the existing conditions around First Colony. I know the commission is familiar with the, with the development, but there is a hotel existing there, as you can see, right off of FDR Boulevard. It also has the tire centers there, you can see, and then some of the other development that's there to give a sense of the immediately adjacent neighborhood to the development. If we go to the next slide, this is another view of the intersection of FDR Boulevard and St. Andrews Church Road. To the left, you can see the backside of the Harris Teeter Grocery Store. That's part of that shopping center. And to the right is where FDR Boulevard would, would cross over Route 4, and my client's project will be just to the right of this picture. If we go to the next slide, this is another slide taken essentially from the property where my clients are, the corner where my clients are proposing to develop, showing you a view of the intersection with Harris Teeter Catty Corner across the intersection to our site. If we go to the next slide, this is another view of FDR Boulevard and St. Andrews Church Road. This is taken from the viewpoint with Harris Teeter behind us and looking toward the site that we'll be developing. That undeveloped corner is where we're proposing our development this evening. If we go to the next slide. So this is, is a good rendering to show you the, the idea behind what the concept will be. And again, I'll let the architects get in the details with you, and my client can certainly answer questions as well. You'll see the apartments there in the foreground, right on the corner of FDR and St. Andrews Church Road. St. Andrews Church Road is kind of going off to the right there, and you can see a little off in the distance is where those three-story towns that were mentioned would be part of it as well. And that second building you see behind the rendering, there'll be more details of that in some of the other slides. Again, it'll include 221 apartment units within the larger building. There are 12 luxury townhomes. You can see that it has corporate suites available for coworking, which is a desire of a lot, particularly some of the younger professionals in our community. Clubhouse amenities. There are many safety improvements that we'll describe later in our presentation. There are walking and biking trails that are being proposed on-site. And then again, there'll be restaurants there, a pool deck with a courtyard, and there will be charging stations for electric vehicles as well that are proposed to be part of the project. If we go to the next slide. These are just some other views of St. Andrews Church Road, just giving a sense of the kind of neighborhood we're in, if anybody has many questions, and to kind of define the neighborhood a little bit better. This is on St. Andrews Church Road going toward the site. If we go to the next slide. These are some of the other uses that are nearby or other properties that are there. There is a church across from St. Andrews Church Road. There's also the landfill just down the street. There's the Walden Center that's there. So that's the, the general nature of the neighborhood. If we go to the next slide, this again is another rendering. On the right of this one, you can see those townhomes from a different viewpoint. This is on St. Andrews Church Road, essentially looking to the left toward Route 235. And then you can see the design of the apartments there with some of the exterior parking, but again, much of it underground, and that gives you a little bit of a design feel for it. If we go to the next slide. And then this is an overhead photo, again, just to show you the, the site. You can see there is some existing, an existing pond on there that I know the site plan will, will discuss. That'll be part of some of the nature trails that we're providing with some alteration to it. And then you can also see there on the corners where the primary apartments and the townhomes will be. So if we go to the next slide, this is another viewpoint of it, kind of showing, looking out from the apartment building toward the townhomes. You can see the garden-style apartments kind of in the background to the left. I mean, you see the pool deck that's being proposed for it. So this really will be a unique living facility unlike really any I think we have in the county in both design and, and location. So that's one of the reasons we're so excited about it. We go to the next slide. These are just a couple of areas to kind of show you the, the property that we have. There's the mixed-commercial area number five. That's from the Plan Unit Development Ordinance. The ordinance number Z98-03 is the ordinance that adopted the Plan Unit Development for First Colony. There's approximately 7.8 acres included in that area. That's called the development pot, envelope pod, according to the, to the PUD documents. And it also includes the picture of that stormwater management pond that I mentioned that will show how that's tied into our design. And then we also wanted to point out that my client has Al Parcel B that you can see that's behind the, the, the existing garden-style apartments that are there. It's heavily nature, and that's proposed to be a conservation area to be utilized as undeveloped open space, including trails, hiker-biker trails, benches, and picnic tables and the such to have, to preserve some of the existing green space in the forest that's there now. So that's also part of what my client's proposing. If we go to the next slide. And what we'll do now is I'm going to, that was just my brief introduction to it, and I know I didn't hit on a lot of the details of it, but we wanted to give you a sense of what the project is going to look like. What we'd like, what I'd like to do now is ask Alan Hansen and Mark Higgs to come up, and they're going to walk through, again, why we're so excited about bringing this type of mixed-use development to St. Mary's County. So I'll ask both of them to step up.
And I got to swear both of you gentlemen in, didn't I? Both of you take that?
You're both sworn in.
I mean, you both took it already?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Just want, just ask. I can't see back there, so I don't know. I remember him, but I didn't, I didn't see.
We're not lying to you.
Okay. Give us your name and addresses, please.
I'm Mark Higgs, 7025 Palemoor Court, Yousville, Maryland.
Alan Hansen, again, DBI Architects. He, team, you want the office, or you want the?
Office, office.
Yeah. It's 35 Isaac Newton Square, Reston, Virginia.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
I asked Al to join me today. He's an expert in mixed-use construction. Before we start, I, I looked at this project about a year and a half ago, and I realized that it really fit the bill for mixed-use, which I've done a lot of. I've done general contracting and construction, you know, most of my career. I'm actually a local person from this area. My family goes back to the, really, one of the first boats that landed in the county for generations. My family lived in St. Mary's County. I think the, the turn of the last century, my great-great-grandfather was selling the vegetables from the farms in St. Mary's County. And a couple, two or three generations later, we ultimately ended up back in Yousville. Been there for, you know, since 1969. And some of my siblings, including my brother, who was actually the person that pointed out this site to me, we actually reside locally. He's in Lusby, I'm in Yousville. I spent a lot of time in St. Mary's County. I actually lived in St. Mary's County when I first got married, from like '93 to 2005. I simply moved over the, the border to Yousville, just, you know, to kind of, I wanted my son to go to a high school that had a good wrestling program, so that was pretty much the story. Didn't hurt that it got me 10, 15, 20 minutes closer to work. I've always turned left and worked in DC, but... I've always turned left and worked in DC, but I've always wanted to do something in St. Mary's County. And, you know, the fact is, is that, you know, y'all have done a great job bringing business and nav air to this community, and it's just a different place than it was, you know, when I bought my house in Eusville, you know, 15 years ago. It's a county that I would certainly like to live in, and I think one of the things that will help overall with the county is to have, you know, some, some mixed-use environments where it's self-contained. It's, it's one thing to have mixed-use where you've got a shopping center and you got, you know, residential, and they're within the same proximity, but it's very unique and it's very commonplace, actually, in this country and in development districts like Lexington Park, where some of these projects are together. And that creates a collaborative work environment in some of the meetings that I've had recently with some of the folks, the stakeholders in your county. It's been very well received. So, you know, what we're here today is to discuss mixed-use and how this project fits and, you know, just have some, you know, a good conversation about the project today.
I'm Alan Hansen. Been an architect for over 40 years. I'm from California, but it's the one on the other side of the country. My father came out here. We were Atlas Centaur and Nike missiles, and then he became the Assistant Secretary of the Air Force. So we went back and forth to Pax River. I didn't even realize, I mean, I was a college kid, not really knowing what I was doing, but enjoyed, got to know Pax River pretty well through that. And I agree with everything that we've said here about mixed-use and walkable. In fact, if we could go to the next slide, there we go. I'm not going to read you every word. You read just fine, I'm sure, but I think the key, to me, statement is there in blue, "development that serves the economy, the community, the public health, and the environment." Well, one of the things that we've learned is the public health. In the state of Maryland, almost two-thirds of the people that are here, they're, they're either got an overweight problem or an obesity problem, and therefore, the greatest disease problem in the state is of the heart. So I am absolutely committed to doing anything that we can do to help people, to encourage people to walk, to ride bikes, paddle a kayak, whatever it takes. I'm a bike rider myself, been doing it since '93. I'm not proud of it, but I needed to do it because that's the way my health was going. So the doctor said, "Get on it. Do, do what you enjoy. Ride your bike." So, big, if you could underline "public health," I think that is a, just a key word in that statement right there. Environment, but I'll get to environment in, in just a moment. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on the architecture. Alan Storm. I see we got a Joe and a Joseph up here. We're going to do the same thing to you. We've got an Al and an Al. In fact, even our middle names are the same, so sorry about that.
You missed one.
Oh, no.
Oh, my gosh. Good. A few key words here that I think are really important. These corporate suites and coworking, you know, the world is different than it was two, three years ago, and there's a lot of people working out of their residences. And so that's got to come into the calculation here regarding the number of units. I think one of the keys also is safety. And one of the things we do want to touch on here is crossing FDR and the building of crosswalks, I guess we'd call them, crosswalks, just some of the best that we can come up with. And there's, is a crossing at the, at the end, at the intersection with St. Andrews, but also we're showing one to the east of that. So the crosswalks are what really helps make it mixed-use by adding the retail that's across the street with the primarily residential that's here. There's other uses, but primarily residential, as you both know.
Thank you.
Then the last item there, charging and transit flex. You know, transit flex, car pools, we call them, I've got another project going on in Maryland where they call them jitneys, but since, what is it, two-thirds of the population of the county is employed over at Pax, you know, ways to make it easy. When you got to go, you don't have to get your car out, you jump on the van, you come back, keep cars off the road. Charging, the word "charging" there is really you recharging, recharging your mind. I think particularly that view to the south and the southeast with a pool and landscape area and so on. There's a lot of people that live in structures like this, but there's no real place to go, you know, recharge. So I think those are the key. I think I'm going to focus on the words and not necessarily the image. They all go together. One of the keys, though, you can see in this image is, look at the street trees, look at the sidewalk, you know, there's, should be places to bike ride, should be places to walk. You're going to get much more of a, you know, a Georgetown or the historic parts of exactly where we are, where it's not like you've got all these buildings sort of cocked in there at all kinds of odd angles, but you don't make a street. So this is a street made on, on both sides, St. Andrews and FDR, which will be, come up with the words. I think it's going to be handsome, and I think it's going to be friendly, and again, encourage people to walk. Next slide, please. Again, I'm not going to have you, I'm not going to read every word for you, but two and three, I think are key. Number two, fosters integration. You can also write there, "completion." Completion of an area by bringing the residential in to the area. There's so much retail and commercial space. I think this helps. You know that the, the components of mixed-use are retail, residential, and office, and so I think this is really going to help the area. The other piece regarding integration is also innovation. And if we are in certain jurisdictions, mixed-use and building up along the street and forming the street, it's not horribly innovative, but I think putting the pieces together here for you in St. Mary's County, I think will be a step in the right direction. The, number three, when we say "walkable" and we talked about the van pools and so on, also "bikable." I want to do, we want to do everything we can to really play up and, I mean, you're attracting young millennials, not young, millennials. What are the things they like to do? I'm sure that's how you came up with the kayaking and the bicycles and so on. I have three sons that are all fit into that category, and I would say that anything we can do to make it friendly regarding bikable, even something as simple as commercial space on the, the building, where there might be a place where you go change your tire, change your tube, oil your chain, and, you know, maybe some glassy space, and people can see as they go by. I mean, I'm a guy that likes to work on his own bike, so I don't mind if the whole world sees me. That's fine. Next slide, please. Again, this is a little bit of what we talked about with the walking space. You get a sense of that and kind of the streamlined canopy that kind of emphasizes the sense of speed. I think some of the words that are in, again, the upper-left, mixed-use projects, office, housing, and shops, we're talking about, you know, special spaces like internet cafes, places to gather people together. I think all people, including the millennials, will have a ball there.
Let me, let me address that real quick. So on the, on the left of this building, the large building here, that's where the restaurants are anticipated at this point. We have spoken with economic development. They thought, hey, you know, have you considered maybe having the restaurants on the, on the street side? I have. We thought it best to have it on the back left where the views are, and basically, that level of ground floor is completely activated. We actually have some residential units on the front on FDR. We've kept the St. Andrews side just open for parking and well-shielded with the buffer so that it's not really a distraction. I really didn't want to, you know, in looking at it and working with Al and his team, we really wanted to make sure that the, the building's tied in. So actually, the back right is the townhomes, and you'll see that in the next photo. The back left is actually Settlers Landing. That's not our townhomes. We only have 12, and they're next to Walden, and we thought that that would be a good fit to kind of tie in with the church. We actually have about, almost a mile of trails between walking trails and sidewalks and bicycle trails. I mean, it's, there's a lot. It's a 7, 7.8 acre site, of which I think about 4.24 actually remains in a vegetated state, including about one acre of the pond will remain. So we've tried to make it fit, and we think it'll be interesting, and we definitely think that it, it fits the bill of having, you know, bringing the mixed-use density rate there. So when you get home, you don't have to get in your car and go somewhere, you know, you can walk across the street, go to Harris Teeter, you can walk to the shopping center. This is, this is a unique opportunity, project for the county because it's going to, it could really be the first of many, and that's why we wanted to kind of discuss mixed-use because we feel that it will radiate a little bit, and you'll have some other sites that are perfect for this type of application. You know, so California, you can start, and then it kind of works its way toward the base and then maybe down Great Mills Road over time. I would, I would like to see, you know, my vision of what I've seen happen in these types of projects is, you start with one, and next thing you know, you've got about 10, 12. The only way you'll continue on a massive growth would be is if you're, you know, Charlotte, North Carolina, and you've got the banking industry driving, you know, 10,000 new residents, you know, a year. I'm not proposing that. I'm from this area. I want to keep this area the way that it is. I'm just saying, you know, we've got some opportunities for some mixed-use projects, and it's going to, it's going to enhance the county in ways that we can all appreciate.
Well, the increase in growth doesn't mean that there's two more cars for every house and the driveway out in front, so. A point, you, you used a word "tied in," Mark, and if you look at our next slide.
The next slide?
Next slide.
Okay.
Notice the way a couple of things work, whether you're talking about the taller multifamily or the shorter townhomes, you're using the same materials, it's the same vocabulary. There's a, there's a harmony to it. But what's, I think, really cool about it is, out in front of those facades, there's this row of trees, and look at the street lamps, and look at the walk and, or the, you know, bike walk, all those things, strollers, et cetera.
It's, that's the trail. We're basically completing the trail. That trail is an added feature. The original FDR did not call for the trail on Route 4. I made sure we put it in, and we also wrapped the site with a trail. So that's, that is the community connection, you know, in that previous picture that showed the people on the street on a nice, safe crosswalk. We've got a traffic calming measure. You know, we just, we think it's definitely a good opportunity to create a destination location for this part of the county.
Yeah. So "tied in" is a great, you might jot down "tied in." It's tying a lot of things together. Next slide, it's got the pool. Few things about this. It, number one, it faces south, southeast. That sunlight isn't something we conjured up in a rendering. That's exactly the way it works. I got a little bit of elevation there, so the view's out over the top of the trees. As Mark said, I think it was Mark that said this, this leisure, this says leisure, one mile of hiking, biking, and walking trails, the truth is, it is one mile on-site. And the question is, when you link it up with other hiking, I mean, I have a, my oldest son is 36, he just took a 12 and a half mile walk, walked with a trail, with the sticks and the whole deal with my seven-year-old grandson, and I'm still scratching my head going, seven and a half miles? That would have been cross-country when I was seven. But anyway, that's what they're doing. So you got hiking, biking, walking trails. We talked a little bit about, you know, biking, even the repair of bikes and so on.
Al, let me, let me step in again, just to be clear. We had, we had misstated this earlier. The back, the back left is Settlers Landing.
Yes.
And the far right is, are the townhomes. So there's only 12 townhomes. Now, the interesting thing about this deck is, it's on the third floor. It's only one floor above FDR Boulevard on this side. It's actually two levels because the site has got some slopes. We're, we're fitting it, we're cutting it into the hill, but this is, this is the third floor, and this is residential. This is a 20,000-square-foot amenity deck, and I do think it's probably the type of deck that could be opened sometimes for, you know, some events. So I think that the community will have a chance to experience this from time to time. Primarily, the residents who, you know, rent the, the units will have use of this, but these types of, you know, amenities are things that the public will enjoy from time to time. The entire site will not be access-controlled, and it will be open to the public. It will be connected to First Colony and to the greater community.
Another point, if you look to the right of this slide, there's a fair amount of green there, and there's even more in the project. Part of healthy is obviously eating healthy. Community gardens, you think of Columbia, Maryland, you think of Robert E. Simon and Reston, Virginia, they created community gardens 40 years ago. And so I think it'd be very easy, especially with this being south-facing, to not only have the hiking and the biking and the walking and so on, but to, you know, have a community garden there, and everybody's eating homegrown food. So, next slide, please.
Before, before you move on, I've got to ask one question. I think you need to clear up. It's open to the public, that pool.
No.
You need to, you need to clear.
Not open to the public?
I heard.
Yeah.
It's open to the, I think you need to clear.
Yeah, for no, for no other reason. I mean, these are, these are high-rent apartments, and so when you rent an apartment in a facility like this, you know, they're open to you and your guests.
Correct.
But it's, you know, we're not, this is not the public pool type of facility.
Very good. That's what I'm.
But I would hope that any resident of St. Mary's County would have an opportunity to come visit this location because, you know, good marketing would be that one day we want them to be a future resident.
All right, and I think these next three slides, I'll use the, this, this slide to make the point. One of the things that's happening in mixed-use, and it goes all the way back to the 1970s, 80s, is where there were constructed architectural buildings in nature. Nature was what man made out of it. It was these groomed lawns and, you know, the concrete walks and the seating and some trees that they put in at, you know, six feet tall or eight feet tall when they start. So it's sort of man-made nature. This site is endowed with undisturbed natural areas. So the intent is, as much as possible, to use what the good Lord put there in the first place, and so we don't just have these manicures. But when, when you get a chance, pull out your photos of Columbia and Reston and look at those, you know, those architectural and, and natural, and all that natural, you know, it's, like I say, you go out and take a scissors and clip each piece.
This is, this is the view, this is why we decided to put the restaurants on this side, because we, we wanted to engage the community. So if they, if there's a place that you can go, you know, have your meetings, do some networking, you know, and that's your view, we think that that's, that's a good view. The residents have it. All of the units are pretty much facing, you know, the, excuse me, the units are either facing out on the streets or inner. So the inner units are actually going to have this view as well. And, you know, I think that this is, you know, this is what the public gets to enjoy at no charge. They can certainly come on the facility, and if they're guests, they can, you know, go up and stand on the pool deck and look at this over. But, you know, preserving, you know, over an acre of that pond and preserving that wetland area that's beyond, you know, the development area, it's very important to me as a, as a longtime person from this area. So, you know, we think that we've fitted the project in the way that it should be, and we think that the density is appropriate for the, you know, the location. I think putting something different here, you know, in my mind's eye, I, I'm having a hard time figuring out what I would put there if it wouldn't be this type of project that, you know, a large part of the county could enjoy.
Yeah, the next two slides, I don't, I personally don't have anything to add to that except, you know, again, you look at these photos, like the next one. again, you look at these photos, like the next one, and then the one on the upper left. I mean, you know, the water, the stream, we've got the water, we get the trees crossing the...
This is actually a view of what you would see from the townhomes, and the previous slide would be like what you would see from the parking lot. So this is just kind of getting you around the area. There's a nice, there's a nice little stream there. It's kind of intermittent, but it starts up pretty good, you know, just beyond the backside of the parking lot, and it flows behind St. Andrews. I think it discontinues, and then it starts back up on the other side of the landfill, and ultimately, you know, it's probably part of the St. Mary's River watershed.
So if I leave you with really one thought, it's to create an environment. Yes, it's mixed use, there's retail nearby, want to make it safe, go from place to place. You know, people, some people will be working there, some not. Make it easy to get over to Paks, since that's such a, you know, what is it, 2/3 of the population here in the county, or, you know, over at Paks River. I think that, as long as people are encouraged, they don't have to get a car out to do everything, they can walk, bike, and vanpool, some of that, then we've all accomplished, we've all moved, you know, a few steps forward, and that encourages me.
Well, to your point...
And the older I get, the more, more it encourages me.
To your point, I mean, we don't, we don't have like a transit shelter shown, but there's a tremendous opportunity. Right at our front door, you know, that, that area is a, you know, it's a big public kind of display area with the sidewalk, and it's, you know, we've got large buffers. We definitely have an opportunity to have a transit shelter of sorts, so that, again, this is a stop for, you know, traffic leading toward the base or other areas or part of the St. Mary's connector. This site needs to be woven in as a stop on, you know, on anybody's list of places to stop. We want to make it convenient. It's a pretty easy, you know, access-in and access-out type of location. Next slide, please, Bill. So, as part of the outreach, we, you know, we had spoken about, you know, some of the delays. We wanted to review this project in more detail after we had the original meeting on the minor amendment, and we realized, you know, there was no vision of the project that was presented, and that was, you know, a mistake that I made. I didn't realize that. Thank you. And so, what we've done in the past couple of months, you know, as we worked toward the presentation, was, we wanted to reach out to the community. So we have met people in the community, we have discussed this project, we've certainly looked for support. Time flies, and so there's more that I'm sure that we could've done, but, you know, we certainly did make an effort. I've been very interested in this site, since I educated myself on the county's comprehensive plan, Lexington Park Development District Plan, reading the economic development deliverables. And we think that we've hit on most of the keynotes. We met with Chris Castlemus and his group recently, and, you know, he pointed my attention to the strategic plan to build an innovation-driven economy for St. Mary's County. He said it was recent, this plan was recently endorsed by the county commissioners. And so I went through it and, you know, highlighted a few things that I think that I'd like to draw to your attention, if you would advance to the next, please. Basically, the county wants to be well-positioned for future growth. And so, part of that is to have, you know, places that are cool, that people want to go to. I'm a strong advocate in let's preserve all the rural areas that we can, but let's put development, in development districts that make sense, not only for now, but for the future. And I think the way that you do that is, is that you give people an option of living in a community such as this, and maybe they'll stay, and, you know, when they recruit an engineer, and the engineer is homesick, or he's too far from the base, you know, this is, this is going to create another option for them to stay. And I think, you know, and it's similar to the types of places that they would live, you know, in the colleges and universities in different parts of the country that they're from. So, it kind of works. It's a common thing to have these types of projects with the mixed use. And, you know, my, my thought is, I think it'll help your retention. I think people will stay, you know, they'll meet somebody, they'll want to stay, they, maybe they'll get over being homesick, because they got, you know, some more things that they can do. Whether they live here or not, you know, I think, I think a lot of the younger folks, millennials, come to this place from time to time. It will be a destination landmark, I think. Next, Bill? So, again, the strategic plan talks about retaining folks to this area. That's, I'm just, go ahead and click on through this. There's a startup culture of entrepreneurs that I wasn't really aware of. We met with the Technology Council locally, the airport innovation folks. We met with University of Maryland, we met with the Naval Alliance. We realized you have a large technical audience. That's, those types of jobs, those types of folks that come in typically can support a project like this. Again, I'm not saying that this should be the only project like it. I think, truthfully, there should be several projects like it. It'll just make this county more attractive to young folks, and, and I think it'll, it'll eliminate the sprawl, to some extent, because I know, you know, these projects are very, this type of project is actually very difficult to build. The underground parking is an expensive element. Urban infill is an expensive proposition. You know, the easy thing would be to find, you know, 20-acre site that's got some density and, you know, build over, you know, what was a farm, and that's, that's sprawl. That's not what I do. I do infill construction, mixed use is my preference, and I, and I look for projects, you know, in locations like this. So, I think this fits with what you want as a county, and it's not the easy way out. It's, this is a hard project to build, but it's well worth the effort, I believe, for the county. Next? There's the statistics that Al Hansen had referenced. Next? So, some of the, some of the takeaways from the strategic report is to, you know, retain young professionals, to focus on business retention and emerging industry clusters. And so I know that wasn't written for mixed use, but I'll tell you what, it's totally appropriate. You definitely want to cluster some mixed use. You want it to kind of radiate from the place that's going to be the start, and then it should really radiate down into the development districts such as Great Mills. And there should be workforce mixed use, there should be luxury mixed use, but it should be woven into the fabric of St. Mary's County, because it's what's going to allow this county to grow, smart growth is what it is. Developing a culture of innovation and ecosystem to help new technologies companies form, that's, that's part of what we're saying. Hey, you know, this could be corporate suites, this could be places where people work from home. I know there's a large percentage of folks that aren't necessarily going back to work. In my experience, having built these types of projects, it's amazing how many people work from home, you know, and you see them in the internet cafe and in the clubhouse and around the site. And, you know, personally, if, you know, I would, if I was working from home, I'd want to get up on that pool deck and work from home as often as possible, you know. And then, when I want to go have lunch, I would walk across the street to Harris Teeter. I think that this project also helps First Colony, which is now almost 20 years old, evolve. I think that the main Boulevard of First Colony is going to be different. When you build this, in 10 years, it's not going to be two tire shops, you're not going to be looking at the back of a shopping center, you're going to be looking at a, at a promenade that you can walk along, and, and we're creating that initial connection, but it will grow. You know, I don't, I won't control the tire shops, but I, I would assume that there won't be tire shops in 10 years if this project goes forward. And that's okay. You want tire shops where you need tire shops, this is a marquee location. You know, enhancing the effort to protect and grow the mission, you know, incidentally, I think that this does that. So, I think we're in sync with the county's latest strategic guidance. Next, Bill? You know, again, gathering places, authentic places in a downtown, easy access to hiking, biking, boating, and just enjoy natural beauty. Not my words, it's right there in your strategic plan for the county. Chris Castlemus has done a great job describing our project. Next? These are some of the groups that were in the innovation brochure. We've met with a few of them. I think we have a lot of support from groups like that, that are residents of the county. We talked about this pretty much at length. Next? The economic facts, I've looked at this, you know, a couple of years ago. I think the job base is there to support this type of project. I think as we evolve, we'll be able to bring some workforce-type of mixed use to the table. But initially, this, this project right here, I think, would be supported by the higher-end technical salaries. But there's plenty of industry and businesses in the county that, you know, people make good paychecks, and, you know, I know that there's empty nesters that want to live here. There will be a diversity of folks that live in this type of environment. Next? The Lexington Park Development District Master Plan, interesting document. I've read it a bunch, bunch of times. I think that our project is a, is a textbook example of what that plan describes. Next? The 10-mile tech, that was something new to me. I didn't realize, you know, how strong the, the tech industry really was outside of Navair. And I think this is an important thing for the county, to have that hedge against, you know, just everything being about Navair. Your technology sector is strong and growing, and, you know, we're only going to be a couple of miles away from it, and probably a, you know, bicycle ride to it. I believe that there's going to be some sort of connection between us and that arrow park, you know, between, you know, rural bike roads and bike trails. Next? Just more good information from the county Economic Development Branch. Next? This is the Innovation District. Again, met with them, they're pretty excited about this project. So, again, just, you know, to repeat, to diversify the local economy, you know, I think we should basically take a look at, does mixed use help us in that goal? And I think that's important, you know, we should definitely be thinking about, you know, we want to make sure it's not a one-size-fit-all situation in the county. This is a big county, there's a lot of diversity, there's a lot of rural areas. I think there's an opportunity to have a, you know, a development district with a mix of housing choices. That's what we'd like to offer. Again, more of the same strategic plan stuff. It's a 58-page document. I would say, you know, by all means, if you haven't seen it, it's a good read, I was impressed. Next, Bill? Existing site? Next? The, the mix that I alluded to that I think will evolve over time? Go ahead, next, Bill? You know, that's what we're looking at now. I think to your right, I would say that, you know, with the new crosswalk and the, the mixed-use development on the left, there's a great opportunity on the right for that to have a similar setup with, you know, some, some trails, some walkways on that side of the road, to really connect the community. You know, if there's, and I, and I know there's other places, there's, you know, you have Leonard Town and you have Lexington Park. California is kind of, you know, another place, you're not going to be able to get this type of condition from California to Lexington Park necessarily, but you can have pockets of it, and I think that this could be one of those pockets. Next? Next?
You want me to jump in?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. So, that was to give you some sense of the, you know, both the mixed-use nature of the project, and also kind of talk through, you know, one of the items we need to show tonight for concept site plan approval, is that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan and other functional plans by the county. Mark talked about the one plan that was there, Bill, I was still on that next slide.
The previous.
Yeah, the previous. So, one of the other things, and I'll touch on it briefly, because I know you're, you're very familiar with your, with the comprehensive plans, is that this project is very consistent with both the St. Mary's County Comprehensive Plan and the Lexington Park Development District Plan. So you can see here a couple of highlights from the land use concept that is part of our comprehensive plan. The development districts are the primary growth centers. Again, we're squarely within the Lexington Park Development District. If we go to the next slide. These are some other highlights, just kind of highlighting where we want to concentrate the majority of our growth in the development district with this type of mixed-use development. So this is, you can see there's references under the development, under each of these bullet points relating to mixed-use development, like the type we're presenting tonight. If we go to the next slide. These are some more, other goals of the development districts. Talk about creating parks, pocket parks throughout them. I'm encouraged attractive buildings, adequacy of public spaces and amenities, ensuring pedestrian and bicycle-friendly environments, and ensuring mixed-use development that co-locates residential, office, retail, and public uses. We think that our, and the final one listed here is to maximize green features in the built environment. We had all five of those, I believe, in one project here, which I don't think is, is always the case. If we go to the next slide. These are some excerpts from the Lexington Park Development District Master Plan, again, showing that we want to revitalize and do infill in the northern subarea. And it also talks about the designs of the buildings being visually attractive in a town-like environment. And again, that is the goal that we're proposing here. If we go to the next slide. These are some other excerpts from the Lexington Park Development District Plan, talking specifically about the FDR corridor, and it talks through some of the other mixed-use development, again, that it asked for. You can see in that highlighted portion in the center of the slide, this plan supports the development to provide mixed-use commercial and residential land uses with the addition of concentrated nodes of high-intensity mixed-use development. Again, we think we, we land squarely within the Lexington Park District Plan. If we go to the next slide. This, again, runs through some of the goals of the plan. I won't, of course, read all of them, but it talks about many of the goals to concentrate development within the district and work on relieving traffic, which you'll hear from Mr. Chandler in a few minutes about how, how we intend to do that. If we go to the next slide. And these are some other highlights relating to transportation and other provisions within the Lexington Park Development District Plan, including the conservation of green infrastructure, which you heard from Mr. Hanson, and Mr. Higgs will be part of this. And again, we believe that, you can see all the highlights, this type of mixed-use development project is exactly what the Lexington Park Development District Plan, which I know this commissioner reviewed not too long ago, and encouraged the adoption. We fall squarely within it. If we go to the next slide. These are some other provisions relating to parks and recreation amenities and bikeways, which, again, will be part of this project. If we go to the next slide. It's also talking about increasing opportunities for regular physical activity. You heard from Mr. Hanson on that. Implementing traffic calming measures, which, again, Mr. Chandler will go through in a few moments. And again, all the highlights, we believe that are specific examples that this project meets within the plan. If we go to the next slide. This is talking about the site and building design features, and you can see under that, we've highlighted all of the provisions under that 9.3, because, again, we believe that this project and one project accomplishes all of those objectives. If we go to the final slide. This, again, talks about sidewalks and walkways, all the things you've heard about, having residential areas and neighborhood commercial areas, all of that, again, is part of this project. If we go to the next slide. These are just some of the other slides. I think we saw this one before. This is the location of the, of the project. If we go to the next one. That is an aerial showing, again, where it's located within the different zoning areas, with the PUD districts being shown in that dark green. If we go to the next slide. And then, again, we looked at this one before. These are the businesses. We can go to the next one. And that is the blow-up of that, if there's any questions about the, the neighboring businesses and facilities. If we go to the next one. Again, it's located within the PUD. We can go to the next one, Bill, this is repetitive. And then this is, now we're getting to the, just highlighting, again, that this is located within this planned unit development district. So not only does this meet all the goals of the comprehensive plan for the county and the Lexington Park District, it also meets the goal of this planned unit development, which was to encourage the concentrated growth within the designated Lexington Park Development District. And that's part of what this PUD was originally adopted for. If we go to the next slide. This is actually an excerpt of that enacting ordinance, the ordinance is in the record. And, again, the idea was for concentrated growth within this designated area. If we go to the next slide. And that's it on the mixed unit development. We, again, as one of the elements that we need to meet those plans, we just wanted to highlight some of those plans. So, I know we've talked a lot generally about the project, you've seen some of the design features. What I'd like to do now is ask Jay Hopson, the project engineer, to come up and present to you the concept site plan, which I know you'll probably have questions about on the specific design standards. So Jay will come up now, and then Jackie will be our last intended speaker to talk about traffic, but of course, the whole team's here for any questions.
Want to give us your name and your company address, please?
Good afternoon. Jay Hopson, 12468 Hernandez Lane, Lusby, Maryland. I'm going to present the site plan to you. Bill, if you can land on the second sheet of the site... Bill, if you can land on the second sheet of the site plan, I think. You know where that is, Mark? It's got to be after my, I think there's a card in there for my name.
It's further up, though.
We're all the way up.
Are you looking for the, the first sheet? I'm looking for is the site plan?
There's a, there's a...
There's a slide that had Mr. Hobson's name on it?
120.
Right, it's 120, but the numbers don't, don't follow through on the left. Let's start your plans. That was a staff presentation.
Quite a ways down, though.
Okay. So it's real number 120, sorry. There we go. Well, there's...
What's that slide, what did it say? Keep going down. There you go.
There we go.
All right. A few th... Pardon?
Press one.
Oh, he's got it.
Bill, if you want the slide check.
Well, you know what, I don't need it re...
You want the slide check?
Bill, I don't need that, just go to the number 126. Can you see that all right out there? If I start talking too fast, please say something, I'll slow down. The zoning on this property is MXM, is, it's been stated six or eight times already. Parcel size is 7.8 acres. The setbacks on this parcel are 50-foot in the front yard, which is FDR Boulevard, and St. Andrews Church Road. St. Andrews Church Road has a 75-foot transportation setback from the original right-of-way line, which leaves approximately 50 feet remaining from that, from the taking in 2000s. The existing conditions of this site shows a pond and numerous storm drain systems running and discharging to the pond. This pond was designed back with the original First Colony, provides water quality management for a portion of Route 4 and a portion of FDR Boulevard. In the 2003 timeframe, it was retrofitted to meet the requirements of the 2000 Stormwater Management Ordinance, a small forebay was put in, and then it functioned the same, it didn't do anything. The setbacks, or the buffer yards on the property, you have the 50-foot, is a buffer yard in the front on St. Andrews Church Road. There's a 15-foot A buffer yard on FDR Boulevard. There's a 50-foot buffer yard against Pyramid Walden, which was formerly Walden Sierra. And the settlers' landing side, there's 25-foot buffer yard as well. All those buffer yards are planted as V buffer yards from the current zoning ordinance, because it's much more dense than what's called for in the PUD ordinance. So the, a portion of this pond will be removed when we go to put the new building in, all the storm drain likely have to be relocated. There's a small pump station serving First Colony up in the front on a small little out parcel near the entrance. That will likely be relocated, but at the very least, it'll have to be improved with oversight from Metcom. The building restriction lines within the PUD actually come off of the buffer yard. So you have the buffer yard, 25-foot setback, then you have the 25-foot building restriction Portions of a stream and wetlands encroached on the southern part of the property, you can see the green stream, wetland. We put 25-foot buffers around those and then expand an additional 25-foot stream buffer on that. So it has a 50-foot buffer around it. Now, this, this plan is a little bit incorrect. Bill, if you'll go to the next page. You see the pond there down at the bottom, the submerged gravel wetland. It's actually going to have to knock off that point a little bit. We had the Corps of Engineers out to fill, verify the wetlands in July of 2020, 2022, and the only change was one little finger of that pond impacted the, or the, one finger of the wetland impacted that pond, so that was revised. All soils on the site are Louisville soils, Caroline silt loam, and Bellesfield silt loam. None of those are hydric soil. The concept development plan shows a six-story apartment building with commercial space on the P2 level, the, the ground level of the parking facility, along with 12 townhouse-style rental units. A two, a double-deck parking garage is proposed. P2, it's the second level, will be below grade, P1 is on grade with four floors above. The six-story, 233-unit apartment complex has a 66,241-square-foot footprint with two restaurants, a clubhouse, and a gym workout area. The building will feature a two-level parking garage, the first level below grade, the second level on grade. Also on site are 12 three-story townhomes with garages. The apartment height is 60 feet, which is the max in that zone, and the townhome heights are 48 feet. FAR on the side is 0.6, which is in line with the current zoning. The site will feature an additional surface parking facility to meet the local parking requirements. The two parking garages will include tenant storage, bike storage, ADA parking spaces, as well as EV charging stations. Exterior parking will feature internal landscape areas and dense buffer yards to shield these facilities. Access to the site will be via the existing 35-foot wide entrance, as well as a second entrance from St. Andrews Church Road. The entrance will be a full-access entrance with an XL-D cell lane on St. Andrews Church Road. Three loading zones have been shown on site to comply with the PUD documents. Environmental site design requirements will be met by providing a submerged gravel wetland to treat runoff. Additional treatment will be provided by hydrodynamic separators that will utilize for pre-treatment. Wetlands and buffers will be preserved to the extent practical, any operation will require the appropriate permits from MDE and the Corps of Engineers. On-site, we have 503 spaces, 144 of them are surface parked. This total development has, of the 7.8 acres of development area, 2.4 acres of it is impervious, 5.4 acres is vegetation. Usually that number's reversed on a project of this size, but 2.38 acres of impervious surface, and that's why you're asking, will that submerged gravel wetland be adequate? And I believe it will. On the landscape plan, we've shown planted buffer yards around the perimeter, it's like, along with the interior parking landscape. The hyperbiker trail that's featured in First Colony has been shown continuing around the perimeter of the site. The ideal being hopefully that at some point in the future, that, that connection will continue down to Wallwood Boulevard or Wallwood Parkway and, and tie the whole innovation district in with this project, along with the three-nosched trail coming down to tie it into First Colony, so. Walking trails associated with the project in, in the exterior of the site. Bill, if you can go the next, there you go. The black dots along the bottom, along the submerged gravel wetland and snaking around there, those will all be walking trails, and those will be placed in the field at the time of construction, as opposed to putting them on a piece of paper and clearing the forest. That way, they can be weaved in and out as appropriate to, to avoid clearing and grading The key to it is to preserve the existing forest to the extent practical. I think this is one of the, I feel it's one of the best projects I've worked on since I've been in the county. I know there'll be some issues with construction and even design with that pond sitting there. Our building's only a little bit in it, most of the forebay. We'll retrofit that to accommodate any stormwater that was going there and then enhance it with additional treatment in the water, in the submerged gravel wetlands. So that's all I have.
Do any of the commission members have questions for Mr. Hobson about the, the site plan? Chandler can speak to traffic.
Anybody have a question to this? Mr. Physique is going to...
Yes, hi, Mr. Hobson. So the slide is up now for us, it's still, it's kind of hard to read. Is, what I'm trying to see is, are you, parts of the development, are you putting in a deceleration and acceleration lane in addition to what's already on Maryland 4?
Yes.
Okay.
It's actually, it's actually going to be, it's, from, from state highway standpoints, they don't care about the hyperbiker trail we're putting in, so they're going to make it a full XL-D cell with a bike lane in the road.
They're going to put a bike lane in the road, too?
More than likely, they usually do.
That's on them, right. So, so the dotted line, the big black dots, that's the...
That's the hyperbiker trail continued.
The perimeter, right.
That's the pedestrian trail, right? The black dots and the gray ones are the...
What, what's approximately the distance between that and the roadway? Do you know?
It's about eight feet.
About eight feet, okay. I wonder anything I want to ask you. Put it out, it's safe for me. Oh, and the, I assume that at the, where the sidewalks hit the roadways, that there'll be ADA-accessible ramps?
We're going to have this sidewalk along the fronters. Bill, can you go back one slide to landscape kind of? So you have the small walkway across First Colony Boulevard, I'm sorry, not First Colony, FDR Boulevard, over to where the tire shops are?
Okay.
To continue, to make that connection. That was actually something that was in the original PUD documents, it was never done. So we were making that connection there. I don't know if there's a connection as we speak over to Harris Teeter, but...
Yeah, that was one of my concerns, because Mr. Higgs talked about walking across for lunch.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I didn't see one going...
I think you can get there, but you just got to go a long, long way out of your way. I, I'm not sure if it's on this leg of the intersection, maybe on the other leg.
There's an existing crosswalk.
Is there? We didn't have, it's tough to find the intersection over there, because it's so new, you know, on any kind of drawings, so you...
I understand that, yeah.
If you go on the GIS map, it shows the crosswalk.
It does, on the very newest, yeah.
Can you clarify again, on Route 4?
Mm-hmm.
I travel that road quite a bit.
Yes.
And every time I go to turn on to FDR Boulevard, there you got the biker trail. But you have all the vehicles either going straight through, there's nothing dedicated to go. Are you all going to straighten that mess out?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, you mean to take the right there?
Yeah, we're going to put the, it'll be a full dedicated right on St. Andrews Church Road.
Along the entire, essentially the entire length of the property. Mr. Chandler can speak to it more, but along the entire property.
It was hard to see on here, I zoomed in.
A lot of info there. One of the things we had looked at at one point during the design process is perhaps tying that XL-D cell further up the road to Walden Sierra. We didn't have the right-of-way to do that, so that was taken off the board.
Mr. Hobson, I have one more. So not to get too technical, I'm just trying to wrap my head around. So existing, we have a very large pond that is, is, we have, you know, no impervious surface on, on this property, and then it's serving the settlers', Settlers Landing, yes. So I'm just trying to wrap my head around how we're, we're, we're building all this, yet the size of that is getting substantially smaller.
Yeah. So... So, so you, you can't see it on this, because the forebay's underwater, but the forebay is about a fourth of the pond, which is essentially where the building is sitting. And then there's some grading that takes up some additional pond. So what'll have to happen is we'll take a look at the rise of structure on that and make modifications to make sure that we have the volume required to treat. And, and that'll just be, how much did Settlers Landing put in there? And that's the number. How much did FDR put in there? And, and, and those numbers, Settlers Landing is, would be probably a pretty good number, but FDR Boulevard, I know because I designed it, is not going to be a big number, because there wasn't much stormwater quality we did back then, we did quantity.
So essentially, you have a very shallow area now, and you're, you get your volume by going deeper, is that...
Well, this volume is probably eight feet deep right now.
Okay.
But you don't need that, only this much of it is doing any water quality anymore.
I see, I see.
It does quantity, we still have to do adequate outfall to make certain that we're not causing a problem downstream, especially if we get rid of the, that much of the pond, because it does do some quantity manage. So I had to look at all of that with the rise of structure.
Thank you.
I'm going to wait until Ms. Chandler speaks.
Okay.
Good idea.
All right. While you're, while you're there, then, Mr. Hobson, oh, don't, don't run off yet.
Okay.
Not yet, close, you were close. I noticed you said two restaurants we're going to go on site, I believe. When I read on the application, it said restaurant, didn't have an S on the end, so where are the two restaurants going to go?
I think, you know, I may have, I may have blown that mark. Is that, is that one restaurant, two restaurants?
If there's a question on the end, then we can add whatever.
Right, okay. Yeah, we had talked about two restaurants, and then there's another, there's a second space there for additional restaurants.
Is that going in the main building?
It'll go on P2, yeah, both in the main building.
Okay.
It's two contiguous spaces, 6,000.
Mr. Higgs, come, come up to a microphone. You're like a voice from above, I don't, I don't get to see you on them.
We didn't put them up.
Anybody, I, I need everybody...
I can't see the audience, so you're saying I'm getting...
There are two contiguous restaurants, they're back-to-back, so they could be just one 6,000 square foot, or it could be two 3,000 square foot, that's the concept. I do want to mention to Jay's point a minute ago, there are, there is a separate storm pond for Settlers Landing, so our storm pond is actually combined, it picks up some state road and county road and a little bit of our site and a little bit of Settlers, but, I mean, Jay's done a fantastic job. The reason why the site looks so wonderful is because we've got a...
The reason why the site looks so wonderful is because we've got a lot of vegetated wetlands, submerged gravel wetlands, that's how we're treating most of the stormwater. And we're able to leave the stormpond as an amenity feature. Still does some treatment, but it's, it's really left as an amenity feature. I think it's the way to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hobson. Anybody else have any questions? Mr. Hobson, before he tries to escape again. All right, Jay.
I'm gonna sit right here with Till Jackie.
And I apologize, Mr. Storm was gonna speak next, I'll go to the architecture, so Jay, maybe you can jump back up with Jack if you want.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question. What type of, we're looking for diversity, are we talking about technology in these areas that's gonna be built?
Next slide.
It's gonna be a combination, correct? Of residential plus commercial?
It'll be mostly residential units in the, in the apartment building itself. It will have the restaurant, or restaurants in there, as Mr. Higgs just testified to. It'll also have other amenities within the facility for the folks that live there, like a meeting room. It'll have the pool deck there, it'll have common spaces like internet cafe spaces within it, so it'll have those amenities within it for the, for the residents.
But I'm not talking about production?
No, no, not like production.
I'm looking for the definition of commercial, was what I was asking.
So the, the main commercial uses will be the restaurants and then their community amenities for the residents.
And amenities, okay.
Mr. Storm, good evening.
Yeah, my name's Alan Storm. 1984 Isaac Newton Square, Reston, Virginia is my office location.
Thank you.
And thank you for having me here today. I guess my part is, we get to do the fun part, we get to try to come up with a building that fits a really sight, a really nice sight. And so that's what we've done here in this particular project. I think it's kind of interesting too, that if you look back, I grew up in a town of 2,800 feet, 2,800 people, and guess what? That was what they called mixed use back there, because it was a small group of people around everything they needed, place they went to shop, the place they worked, et cetera. And I think the whole concept we've had talking about mixed use is how do you get people to be as close as they can to their work and to their families, et cetera, because it's kind of like the way people are working these days. And so I think that most of the things we've been working on lately have been some sort of mixed use. And this is a beautiful one, we really liked when we had a chance to come look at this site, because you have a really great commercial area, and by being able to add more residences nearby, that would provide the opportunity for those residences basically not to have to travel as far, and that's the whole concept. And what we said, you know, what we've heard so far today is that, you know, the more people can walk and ride and things like that, the better off they are. We certainly believe that. And more importantly, on this particular project, what we're seeing, and it sounds like what you're trying to do, certainly from what the economic indicators indicate, is you're trying to keep a lot of younger people together. And younger people aren't like the younger people when I grew up. Younger people do things like socially, I mean, they really get together as a group of people. And if you have a place that's really nice, that's an apartment-type place, where people learn to really find out who their neighbors are and things like that, you find that they, they tend to stay together a lot longer. And so the concept is that hopefully more of these people will end up staying in the neighborhood, then they'll eventually, eventually move out of the apartments and move into other houses nearby. So, I think conceptually, that's what the whole, whole process all about. But this, this particular project was really nice, in the fact that we had a site that obviously has tons, tons of vegetation. What we tried to do is make the most beautiful building we could on this site to accommodate a lot of folks and give all those people a nice space. I think the nicest part about this whole building is the fact that this U shape was really perfectly situated for that corner. And as you can see, we eased the corner off, because we wanted that corner to feel like something special, as you come around either direction. We wanted it to be an architectural feature that would be really strong, would look nice, and would kind of set that whole building apart. The other thing I think about this type of site I like a lot is that we were able to do this raised courtyard in the middle. That's a big courtyard, but the beauty of that big courtyard is it allows all the people that surround it on the inside and outside, the outside people have the normal look you'd get to, you know, the streets, et cetera, but the inside's nice, because you get to have a really nice amenity in, in the interior, including the pool there. I think there's a lot more space in that particular inside space, I would be hopeful it could be used for many different types of functions, for the people that are here or potentially some other things that can be done on that particular site. But, so generally speaking, that's, the way we looked at it first was that's, that corner, there's an important part of the corner, we thought that was the best part, and then from that point, we wanted to, to go up the site. This is a fairly, fairly, you know, angular site, so we wanted to have townhouses on the site, because we wanted to come up with not just, you know, one type of housing. In this case, we got one bedrooms, we got efficiencies, we've got two bedrooms, and we also got townhouses on the same site, which is, is a nice mix. And that's, you know, again, if you look at mixed use things, that's what they want you to try to do, make as many opportunities as you can. So the townhouses fit really well on the top and came down the site there toward the, toward the U. And then, next slide please. Next slide is kind of just a quick sketch elevation, these are just obviously the original sketches we were working with when we kind of worked ourselves into the final drawings. Here it shows you on the left side, you got the eights there, townhomes, and then you can see, the building, it's been said is a six-story building, what's really, one story's underground, so that's totally underground, and the second story, depending on where you are on that, that particular floor, it's basically grilled or it's on grade. And then you have the floors above that, the four floors above are the residential floors. And you can see that both in that cross-section and, next slide. On the corner, that's the element I was talking to you about, is that we wanted to kind of make a really strong element on the corner. A lot of things that happened on this building that are kind of nice, that kind of go with the Georgian character of, of the philosophy of this area, it's all symmetrical, it has symmetry going down both sides of the building, you know, interacting with the balconies and interacting with the, with the arcades. And arcades are nice, in the fact that arcades basically hide the mechanical, which is on behind that on the roof. So those little arches that come up to the top and, and basically expose beyond that time. Next, all right, next slide. Here's just another corner looking from the other direction. Next one, please. Just a little bit closer. So, what we tried to do is we put together some really nice materials for this particular project. We're using a gray, kind of a common Flemish bond on the, on dark gray base to call out a base of a building, typically speaking, you always have a nice solid base for the building. That's mixed with the grills, that all covers up basically the parking, which is behind. And then from that part, going forward, going up, you've got a combination of the, the red Flemish common brick and a combination of grays, depending on where they are, and goes through the rest of the, of the project there. And the next, the townhomes are at the other end of the building, other end of the building project. Again, we're just pulling those, those same kind of features, the same kind of finishes in. In this case, we have some siding at the top to, you know, break up the elevations and the look of that. Next slide. And here's the parking garages. Essentially, you're entering the parking garage on the, on the P1 level, you're entering from the right side, through, basically goes around to the rest of the, I can't say, goes around to the best, rest of the parking that's behind. We really worked this parking lot so that it would be very, very efficient, so we can get as much of the parking as we could off the site. It's always nice to, in this case, that's what's really nice about, you know, putting the parking below grade, it's like it's hiding the cars. Nobody really likes to look at tons of cars, and so that's how that's working. And then on the top, on the P1 garage level there, you have the yellow, the yellow building, the yellow spaces there are the one bedrooms, there can actually be a couple more worked into that site, if we need to do that or if we want to do that. And then the other, other level is just parking. Next slide, next slide. And this kind of gives you a, a good view of the, of the way we break it down, how we work around the plaza level. You got your studios, one bedrooms, one bed or plus and two bedrooms. Next slide. And then that's the end of the, of the look, it, we think that that looks really nice from that corner. Next slide. And this project, coming back this direction, the actual major entrance to the building is right here in the, in this corner, and it, I think this opens up to a very nice capability of coming out of the, of the one, one road into the other, around the corner into the back. And I think, my, my feeling is, looking down this particular street toward the whole, you know, into the, into the U, is a really nice, very, very nice look of the whole project in it. When you add all the trees and alike, it, it really fits quite well. Next. And again, finally, from the, from the pool deck and out, that's a nice pool deck.
Excuse me, Al, I want to remind, I had forgotten, we didn't really make this very clear. One of the ways that we're activating the street is our clubhouse is in the front of the building on FDR. That was the area that was shaded in blue. It's about a 3,500 square foot clubhouse, ties to a nice sidewalk in the front of the building. There'll be the view of the fitness room from there, so, and then the apartments, you know, to the left side of it, closer to FDR. So that's, that's how we're activating the street from, you know, making sure that there's people there. And another thing that I would like to do with the garage, I would like to make sure that it's 50% open. The two levels are not connected internally, they're actually separate entrances from, once from FDR, once from St. Andrews, so you have an opportunity to get into the building, different places, park in different ways, use the restaurants and, you know, different parking. So I think there'll be some elements of, of, you know, it'll be convenient, you know. But I do think it's very important to stress that the clubhouse is our commercial connection on the front, to your point. Thank you. Thanks, Al.
Why, why are you using the clubhouse instead of the restaurants?
The restaurants, I thought, you know, just to try to make sure that the project works economically, that the more valuable space for the restaurants, in my view, I know that, you know, I've spoken with Chris and some other folks, have said, hey, why don't you put it on the street side of St. Andrews? Certainly viable, and I think when it's all said and done, we'll look at that. In my personal opinion, I thought that it would be best to put the restaurants on the back, facing the, the really nice views, you know, otherwise it would have just been parking back there, and that just seems to me to be a waste of space. I personally think that those views better of the wetlands are, are better than the views of, of the street. And really what you're gonna be looking at is, is a heavy buffer of vegetation, so why not look at the natural vegetation instead of the man-made, the man-planted vegetation that we're putting in the buffer yard on St. Andrews? Just my opinion. That's why we did it. We could change it, we just, we'll do it based on a market study, I think. But it still will only be 6,000 square foot of restaurant space.
Roger, can you?
Okay, thank you.
Does that make it a lot easier to, for people coming in, if they want the public to use the restaurants? If you have it on the backside where the U is?
I don't think it's much different, because it's, you know, when you walk into the building, you can walk down the side to the, to the side door of the restaurant. We actually have connector stairs from the parking levels, so it's, there's gonna be multiple ways of getting to the restaurants. I like the idea of being able to walk in from the street, from FDR, you know, let's say that you're across the street, you can walk across the street into the front of the building, you can walk through the front door, you know, through the leasing office, because part of the leasing office will just be open, and then you walk through into the garage into the restaurants, or you can use, you can walk through the garage, since it's not gonna be access controlled, or you can walk around the side of the building, you can come around through the back. So just a lot of ways to get to the restaurants.
While you're talking about that, what's the percentage of, in the parking garages are gonna be dedicated to, I'll say, apartment owners or apartment renters? What's gonna be dedicated to them?
Our code parking that we're following, we're actually pretty close to, we have a few extra spaces, it's, generally averages about 1.5 parking spaces per unit, per the code.
I mean, inside, you're talking about people coming into the restaurant and parking in the garages or out in the outdoor, how much of it is gonna be strictly dedicated to?
Yeah, I definitely want to reserve some interior parking for some restaurant folks, not just make them all park on the surface. We haven't determined what that mix would be. But yeah, I think that's a fantastic point and a good idea to have not only exterior parking for the commercial restaurants, but also the opportunity to park on the inside. Typically, what you do is you reserve about 30 spots next to the restaurants for, you know, visitor parking.
Well, that was more what I was trying to get to, as well as Mr. Thompson, is that if you've got parking around to the back, they can drive in, and you know you've got parking back there to get to the restaurant and?
Yeah, the idea is, I mean, there will be some reserved parking on a project like this, but for the most part, you know, probably 450 spaces will be open to park wherever you want. We'll assign parking per se. But if that becomes an issue where it needs to be done that way, to keep, you know, people from driving around the building, we certainly would do that. But generally speaking, I want to make the public parking as convenient as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Before Ms. Chandler comes up, does anybody need to take a break? Not that we're gonna grill you or anything, Ms. Chandler, I just want to make sure that if anybody needs a break, we'll take a five-minute break now. Come on with it. Good evening.
Good evening. For the record, Jackie Chandler with Traffic Concepts. Our address is 7525 Conley Drive, Hanover, Maryland. I have with me my colleague, Mr. Brian Peak, who's going to work the traffic simulation tonight. I want to go through a few things first, before I get there. As Mr. Longmore had mentioned, this site is part of the First Colony PUD, and there was a traffic agreement that was recorded in 2006 that agreed, the developer agreed to do a certain number of improvements, and with those improvements, there was a trip cap set. So that cap was 906 a.m. peak hour trips and 903 p.m. All of those improvements have been done that were listed in that agreement, I'm gonna go through them quickly for you. I have some exhibits on Mr. Hunt, if you could go to the next slide. One, one more. So this is the actual recorded agreement, it's in the record. You can skip over a couple of, a couple more of these, Mr. Hunt, I think these, you can stop here. This is a chart of, well, go one more, because I want to go through the, all of the improvements that were done with the PUD. This was the first one that has been done, so since 2006, the PUD was required to provide a double left turn lane on northbound 235 at First Colony, and those lanes were required to be 600 feet long, so I've kind of clouded on here where the double lanes are, they are constructed today. And next slide. They were also required to provide an extra through lane on northbound 235, beyond Old Rolling Road for 2,000 feet. That's been constructed and now extends beyond the 2,000 feet that was constructed for First Colony. Next slide. At Maryland 4 at FDR, so this is how the intersection looked before FDR was constructed on the Harris Teeter side. They were required, they were gonna add that fourth leg, or not prior to the fourth leg, they were adding a separate right turn lane, I'm gonna call that northbound on Maryland 4, I guess it could be north or eastbound. That separate right turn lane was constructed prior to that fourth leg being added. It has since been modified to a through shared with a right. Next slide. They were required to signalize the intersection. You can see on here, I know there was a question earlier about crosswalks. This shows where the crosswalks are. The proposed slate is in the lower-left corner of this slide. Next slide. They were required to signalize the intersection of 235 at First Colony Boulevard, so this is just a photograph that shows that the signal is there today. Next slide. Another major thing that First Colony did was provide all of the right-of-way for FDR through the site, and they were required to build the four-lane section down to First Colony and then the two-lane section beyond that. This has all been done as well. Mr. Hunt, if you could go back to that chart. So, what I did with the chart was I did a trip comparison to say, everything that's been built today. So the first line shows the total approved trips in the agreement, 906 a.m. peak hour and 903 p.m. So then I listed everything that's been built, as well as some proposed, the animal shelter that's proposed is, is included on this chart, as well as the military housing that's built, even though that was exempted from APF in that recorded agreement. So, with all of that, and then taking out the very last line is the proposed slate, is 221 apartments, 12 rental townhomes, and this actually shows 6,922 square feet of restaurants, but that's because I added in terrace or outdoor seating area, so it's a little different than what's noted on the plan, it's just additional area. But even taking off all of that from those approved trips, there's still 357 a.m. peak hour trips left over and 138 p.m. peak hour trips left over. And that's just because the original traffic study for the PUD assumed a major build-out that has not occurred to this point. that has not occurred to this point. So there were extra trips in that traffic study. So with all of that said, this project continues to meet APF because it's within that trip cap that was approved in the recorded agreement in 2006, and all of those improvements have been constructed. However, with, you know, we had some discussions, I talked to the developer and said, you know, you really need to do something in this area. We know that that intersection has become a problem. So above and beyond APF, I think what you need to do is to create a right turn lane. I've actually heard it said in this group before.
Really?
For other hearings. So I suggested that, you know, he'd go above and beyond his APF and offer that. So what I have for you guys tonight to look at is a traffic simulation. What we did is, we haven't exist, I have a lot of simulations, but I'm not going to bore you with those. So I'm going to show you what it looks like existing conditions during the evening peak period, because that's the highest of the peaks. And Brian, I apologize, because it's not a great view, but you may be able to zoom in on that a little bit. I'm sure the folks here that drive this or understand that, you know, we have a, we have a bit of a queuing problem on what I'll call northbound 4, northbound or eastbound 4.
Yes.
And it does queue up to 235. So what we did with this existing is we went ahead and added in the proposed development. We did not assume any shared use or pass-by, just as a worst case. We went ahead and included what you'll hear about for the amendment to the PUD as 291 units, even though that's not the plan, but we added those volumes in. And Brian, if you can bring up with the improvement with that separate northbound right turn lane and the slate added in, you'll be able to see an improvement there. We have much less queuing on Route 4 northbound in the PM. So without this improvement and without the slate under existing conditions, that queue reached 631 feet in the AM peak and 442 feet in the PM peak. So with this improvement, with the right turn lane, we can reduce that queue down to 237 feet in the AM from the 631, and then reduce it in the PM to 199 feet from what was 442. So it is a major improvement by adding that right turn lane. We did send this information to the State Highway Administration as well as DPWNT. And they've, State Highway has approved it. They did have some comments, you'll see in the record. There was a little confusion there about whether it was an APF study or not, so we had to kind of get that straightened out first. It's not an APF study. We did this study just to show the improvement that could occur with a separate right turn lane that's over and above APF.
Jackie, let me ask you a quick question.
Sure.
Is, with that right turn lane that is proposed onto FDR, is there going to be a separate right turn lane into this proposed development?
No, it will be one continuous lane that's a shared, what we call an auxiliary lane. So if somebody were to get in that lane, they can make the right into the facility, or they can continue up and make the right on FDR.
How far back is that entrance? Proposed, new entrance?
It aligns with Church of Christ across the street.
But I mean, I understand that, but what's the distance? Do you estimate, how many?
Probably 500 or 600 feet.
Jackie, can you shrink it down and pull both of those entryways into the picture? There you go. Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
So they're going to have an in-and-out on the lower part, so, and that'll be across from the Church of Christ. That should give them enough, the only worry I would have at that point would be the right turn lane is really called for and desperately needed, and I'm glad you all do it. I just want to make sure that people that are pulling out of your site have a chance to get over into a left lane, and it appears that they will have, have that much, I'll say, length.
They will, and that'll be designed as stop-controlled. It will not be an acceleration lane, so the folks coming out will not have a free rate where they can continue to move, they will have to stop.
I wish we could see bike traffic.
Let me ask you one more question about that. You stated in one of the improvements of the six things that was agreed to be improved upon by the PUD, that they previously had a dedicated right turn lane, and who miraculously decided to take that away? State Highway or?
I think that was taken away during the construction of the Harris Teeter, when they did that additional fourth leg. I think it was taken away at that point and shared with the through.
What are we going to do to manage the traffic going across to, across FDR?
That's the problem. I was going to say that. If you put that, put that back up.
Could you bring that back up, please?
I've lost my footing here.
It'll still be a problem making a left.
Yeah, but I'll tell you, it gets really, really bad when people are trying, they're coming out of those other developments.
Yeah.
And they're trying to cross over, and they get stuck right in the middle. And it's really dangerous.
And then you're going to have people coming out of the apartment complex trying to get across.
And they're going to try to go there.
Yeah.
That's really a concern.
There's the easiest solution to that.
What's that?
Have a raised crosswalk. It's a county route, so the county could approve that if they wanted to, and it would force cars to slow down, so you wouldn't be going as fast. The cars that are going, you know, 10, 15 miles over the speed limit on FDR would...
Which they are.
Which would have to slow down, otherwise they're going to bottom out and just screw up their car.
And you're just creating another congestion issue around that.
Mr. Higgs has been looking for that same exact thing, that and a slower speed limit along that route.
Yeah.
Well, it'll have to be an enforcement issue with the county.
Well, you have to do a speed study and then...
I mean, if it's posted, then it has to be, has to be...
I don't think that fixes everything, though.
But that, when folks try, when cars try to go and make that left turn, like to go into BJ's or...
Right.
And then there's, I forgot what was for the first...
The Tire Place?
Yeah.
We have the Tire Place and BJ's, and then the next one is Metcom, five below and those type of buildings.
But it backs up because people are stuck right there trying to cross over, and it backs up everything trying to come in.
Is the church still planning to build on the...
Yeah.
I think so.
It's included in there. She has, she has...
Yeah, the numbers are included in Jackie's analysis of the church.
How do we, how do we know, how did you get those numbers? Do you know what they're planning on using during the week?
For the church?
Yeah.
I just assumed the church.
Right.
The size of the church.
But you, you have, that's, well, considering peak would be during the week, that's a lot of people going to church, so I was assuming that you made an assumption of what they were planning on using it for during the week.
Yeah, just typical ITE numbers for a church for during the week.
Roger that.
Yeah.
ITE, what is that?
Institute of Transportation Engineers.
Okay, thank you.
Sure thing. And keep in mind that when we add the right turn lane northbound, we can modify the signal timing enough to lessen the queue on FDR as well, because we can give more time to the side street. That's just a function of whenever you add, when you physically add a lane, you can change the timing around. We wouldn't need to give as much time to northbound 4, so that queue will lessen on FDR as well.
And who's in charge of that?
I'm sorry?
Who's in charge of changing the timing?
That's the State Highway Administration, so they will automatically modify the timing. Once the turn lane is constructed, the state will come out and modify it to the best, you know.
Will Department of Public Works have any feedback into that also, because it's FDR Boulevard?
Not a lot, anything that's a state highway, even if they only own one leg of it, they control the signal timing, unfortunately.
Okay.
All this is based off of traffic as FDR stands now. And so, being that we plan on finishing, by the time, I guess, this will be here, another leg of the FDR, I'm sure another quarter mile will be available. But, and so, traffic will be, the traffic flow through this area will probably be increased a bit.
Right, and one thing I should point out, that we, we did do our traffic count in 2020 during COVID, so we added 16 and 1/2% to that.
Did you say 16?
16 and 1/2%.
16?
16 and 1/2.
On 6?
From 20, from...
From 2020.
December of 2020. So what we did was we looked at State Highway data from 2019 to 2020 along Route 4, and it was down 16 and 1/2% between those months. So we added 16 and 1/2.
It was only down 16%?
At its highest COVID, it was down 40. At its highest.
That's it?
Mm-hmm.
And that seems a little short.
Yeah, no. And the State Highway Administration, actually, they've said that traffic volumes are now back to 2019 volumes, that it's recovered.
Yeah.
Basically, and the difference, the difference is that some people are still teleworking, but you do have small vans that have increased, think Amazon. So although some people may be working at home, the vans have increased.
What do we call them, peak hours again?
The, the peak hour that we've shown is 5 to 6 PM.
More like 4 to 6.
How come some of these other numbers, Jackie, aren't filled in on the mixed commercial area for the first, on the chart?
On the chart.
On the generation chart. It seems awful. Is this taken into consideration every exit leaving First Colony to PUD, or is this just...
And this is not actual traffic counts, this is based on that Institute of Transportation Engineers, their trip generation. So it's, and just adding up all of the retail that's there, and then all of the office and running a trip generation.
Yeah, but the first six or seven doesn't have anything by, and what is, what...
It's because at the bottom, you'll see it says total retail space, 14,310. So that's added all of the retail that's above it. So that's adding the tires plus Mr. Tire, that's the retail. And then the total office space is 34,000. If you add up all those small offices, it's 34,000.
So that's taken into consideration, I'm assuming the PUD not having a map to look at it, runs all the way to the road that separates McDonald's, and so that whole thing is the...
Yes, and this agreement that was done in 2006 was after the retail along 235 was already constructed. So this was the second phase of the PUD.
Well, I understand that, but it seems like Chick-fil-A gets that many trips in a day if you ever tried to go to that Chick-fil-A.
Right, right, and Chick-fil-A was part of the first phase, so this...
It's not included in this, so this is really not...
Well, it's background to this, that it was already built out.
It was already built out when this agreement was recorded. That was already done and...
Yes.
So this agreement was a total of 906 and 903, though.
Right, and it was just mixed commercial area 4, residential area 1, 2, 6, and then the proposed pod 5.
So, understood, but in retrospect, it's nowhere near the total trips that are actually entering and leaving that place.
Correct.
In the course of a day.
Correct.
Plus, in the PUD agreement, the Navy housing is not even included in...
It's supposed to be exempted.
It is exempt, that's what I read, I'm just saying, so it's more, it's a whole lot more than the numbers show.
Well, I did include the military housing in this chart.
But it didn't have to be.
It didn't have to be, right.
So we counted those as trips again, so the APF agreement provided a certain number of trips were left within the PUD as of 2006. There'd been other improvements done for the commercial along 235.
Gotcha.
Throughout the development of the PUD. They looked at the PUD at that point and said, here's what we got left to build, here are all the additional improvements you have to do from this point forward to get this number of trips. It specifically said you could adjust some of the uses and apply these trips to that. So those had already been mitigated, and they looked at that as background and said, you still need other improvements, here's what, what you, what you have going forward. And, and just so it's clear, as Ms. Chandler mentioned, the Navy housing was exempt from APF as a federal project, but we included those numbers as if they took up the numbers. Arguably legally, we could have said no, but we wanted to show you that there were plenty of trips left, even with counting the Navy housing that had been added since 2006. If that makes sense.
I'll let you finish, I have plenty more questions for you and Mr. Thompson and Mr. Longmore, I'm sure, but I'm sorry, go ahead.
You're fine.
Just real quick, on the, on the peak hour selection, the process to determine peak hours, do you actually have numbers to prove that these hours are our peak hours, or do you just use IT standard and determine, determine that these are peak hours for your area?
So the actual traffic count is the peak hour of the roadway?
Okay.
Yeah, so that's based on an actual count.
Okay.
Right. Mr. Hunt, if you could move forward a few slides. There you go. So the Route 4 improvements that we talked about, just to give an overview of cost, including the right turn lane improvements necessary to make their full movement access, there are about a million dollars' worth of improvements there. The trails that they talked about along Route 4 is about 50,000 more. The crosswalk at FDR Boulevard's about 250,000, and the reason that number is, might sound kind of high for a crosswalk, is that we'll also look at, you know, whether that needs to be signalized crosswalk or raised or something that's, you know, safe for pedestrians. So we would work through the process with DPWNT to figure out the best crosswalk there.
Jackie, are you referring to a pedestrian signal?
Yes.
Yes. And then the trails on-site, there's about $100,000 worth of trails on-site. Other community enhancements that Mr. Higgs talked about were nature trails, hiking and biking trails, car charging stations, bike racks, transit shelter. Next slide. No, we don't need that one. Is there a next slide? That's it. That's all I have. Any additional questions?
Jackie, is the, the FDR, I mean, the Route 4 dedicated turn lane is the only traffic improvement that you're making for this project? Is that the...
Over and above, yes. Over and above APF, yes. They, they will be doing other improvements to make that access point work. They're planning to take out a portion of the median so they can get a left turn bay in.
I think it's, it's a good thing, but, I mean, I've heard over and above quite a few times in people speaking, but if you read the PUD agreement, what was proposed, which was done, was proportional to what was approved within the PUD. And now what they're asking for is over the proportion of what was approved. So I don't know if this is necessarily a, you know, pat us on the back, we're doing this, you know, I think it's something that's required, it's not required, but it would have probably been discussed by us, as you said, like we had, had done for other, for other projects.
Right, right.
The, the initial six road improvements were for a limited number, not only of trips, but of housing units and commercial space. So it was a total of all three of those things that came into play.
Correct, it was a total, it was a total number of trips that were capped and were under those, under that trip cap.
Now, the APF agreement wasn't limited to what was proposed at that time, it specifically said the uses could change within the PUD, as long as you meet this trip cap, you, it anticipated that it may change over time, so...
But what I'm saying is, those additional, not additional, those things that was agreed to be put installed road-wise, didn't just go upon the trips. It was also because, it says right in there, there was allowed 1,000, I mean, 1 million is on square feet of commercial... million is, um, square feet of commercial and four hundred housing units. So, I think it's a combination of all the things that the PUD was approved for initially.
It, it was all the things that were in the, in the concept of the PUD at that time, but all those were not built. So, that, that, and that's why there's still trips available.
Oh, I understand there's trips available.
The PUD changed over the last fifteen, sixteen years. And with the economy and everything, it stalled for a while, like a lot of things did. Um, so, you're right, it isn't the original design, but we're still well under the number of trips that were provided for, for those improvements. And we worked hard to communicate with both DPW and land use and the county attorney's office to make sure they agreed with our interpretation of that PUD agreement, or the APF agreement. And, um, they've confirmed that they are, they're, they're all here tonight, you can confirm that if you need to. But all of them have agreed with us that we do already meet APF, uh, for traffic. But again, that's why, in working with our client, um, they're willing to provide this additional improvement, that he knows is needed, it'll make the project better, but you can see the expense that's there along with it.
Oh, sure. Let me see if I have any more questions for Ms. Chandler.
Well, I think it was needed. It was just one, maybe one of the slight things that was, I won't say overlooked, but wasn't anticipated, to how important that turn lane was gonna be, or turned out to be, because when it first came in, you know, in FDR, I'll say, hadn't been extended, and it just went in the back, it was a back driveway. Well, now, it's a, it's a, it's a collector. So, it, that, that right turn was really needed, and will make a big difference in that intersection.
That, the left-hand turn coming off of, uh, off of four going into the property, can we pull that back up?
I don't, I don't think it's shown on the, uh, plan that was submitted, that the left turn was-
It was on the simulator.
On the simulator.
Right.
Yeah, it's on the simulator.
I guess I was, I was looking at where, where those, those two lanes over there merge, and, and, in relation to where, where the turn lane is.
Are you, are you referring to making the left out of FDR onto four?
No, no, no.
From-
From four going into the property.
Yeah.
It's a, it's an interesting one on that side, right?
Cut us off, bring it back down a little bit?
No.
It'll work out to be about a two-foot wide medium from the stop bar up there, and then, transition down to the full length, uh, turn line.
We don't show, we don't show anything going in, into that, into the property here?
Yeah, you'll see a car go in there occasionally, it's not a, um, because throughout the hour, there's not a lot of vehicles that'll come in there.
Okay.
But, I don't, Brian can probably fast-forward that a little so he can see a car or two.
Can he bring it down so we can see that intersection?
Oh.
Other way. A little more, a little more.
Right there.
Oh, and they don't, they don't merge until after?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
We'll never know.
Yeah, we won't.
Can you bring it down a little bit more? Put that, now, bring that Route Four and FDR right in the middle of the screen.
And zoom in.
There you go. And zoom in just a little bit. I hate to be order-y, but-
You're doing well.
No. Okay.
Okay.
I don't think I have any more for Ms. Chandler, I think I have some for Mr. Hobson and maybe Mr. Longmore, unless somebody else wants to ask traffic questions.
I just have a comment about traffic in general. And I think that, I'm appreciative of the fact that extra lane will be put in place, because I do think it was overlooked. And I, and I think it was, um, I think it was overlooked, period. I also think, and this is not on the applicant, I also think that coming out of FDR, past this development, making a left onto Route Four, where there's a dual lane-
Yeah.
It becomes a jailbreak trying to get to the single lane.
Yeah.
Um, I'm not sure, that was an oversight as well. That should never have been constructed that way, uh, to put cars side by side and, and have them in such a short distance-
Yeah.
Drop into a funnel, because it is a jailbreak. I mean, people on the outside lane, and, you know, you can't really do anything about bad behavior.
It's tough, it's just like, uh, down on Great Mills Road where it hits, um, Route Five.
It's the exact same thing, exactly the same.
You gotta go for it. Don't look to your right, don't look to your left, just go for it.
Hit the gas. So, so imagine, imagine putting a, a turning lane at the end of that-
Yeah.
At the end of that funnel, it was like, now, we got a left hand.
Yeah, and that's what I'm, I'm just saying.
It should've been taken all the way up to Wildwood Boulevard and-
You know, you're right.
We don't get to build those roads, do we, Mr. Hobson?
We don't get to build these roads, but in, in a perfect world, that road would've gone all the way to Wildwood Boulevard.
Yeah.
And guess what? That nice light right-hand lane that you guys are doing, that should come all the way from Wildwood Boulevard too, on the right-hand side. Now, I'm not suggesting, I'm just, just saying, in a perfect world, and DPW may be in a, a bit of the way, but that's okay, the county owns that property.
The county does?
He's just shaking his head, no. That's fine.
Okay. Anybody else have anything?
So-
Thank you.
How many units over housing will we be at with this? Because when you first, when they first came here for the text amendment, they had proposed, I think, two ninety-one sticks in my mind or something, and then we seen less, and now, it looks like, um, two thirty-three?
Two forty-one. Is it two forty-one?
Every, every number is different.
Two thirty-three in the-
Two thirty-three is what I should-
How many do you have left out of the four hundred?
Hundred and sixty.
Yeah.
I believe, isn't it?
Um, you're talking about, how many units total?
No, what, what the PUD was designed for, for four hundred housing-
Yeah, you had, Settlers Landing's got two hundred and forty, so you had a hundred and sixty left.
Yeah.
And y'all are asking for, um, you're actually asking, Mr. Norris is asking for two hundred and ninety-one, but we're, we're looking to give you two hundred and thirty-three to make this, uh, this work.
That's correct. Um, the, the, the reason for the minor amendment was because the county, you know, it suggested that was the best way to go ahead and, you know, get that piece, the PUD cleaned up.
I don't know why he wanted two ninety-one versus the-
Two ninety-one was based on, if, if, let's say that the, we did the market study, and we realized, well, there's too many, you know, vacant retail spaces in, in this area, so it's not really viable. And so, I said, well, if that were the case, then we would probably, you know, utilize, because parking's what really drives it at the end of the day. So, we would have, we would have the ability to have more, um, residential units, if the restaurant risk proved to be, you know, we can't keep a restaurant tenant in there, and it's always vacant, which does happen in some of these mixed-use projects. So, that basically just gives this site some flexibility, that if, if need be, you know, we could have, you know, a higher number of units, maybe they're a little bit smaller, so then they're just, it's workforce.
That's fifty-eight or units, huh?
Yeah, it's just, it's seven hundred square foot for the usable space.
It's a mighty big number.
So, it's just simply just a calculation, where we have a concept plan for this, which is very specific. The minor amendment applies to the PUD forever, which would have to come before you with another concept plan to change it, but, you know, the minor amendment was just basically a concept for that many units for the development space.
I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves, I mean, to me, a number of like two fifty would be good more, instead, you know-
Yeah.
If your restaurant doesn't work or whatever.
Yeah, we recognize that you would-
That gives you seventeen extra units.
Want to discuss that.
You could, you could pop in there, but, but to put, uh, have two hundred and ninety-one, that's, that's, you know, that's a little much to me, but we'll get to that, that's, that's part two.
Yeah, and that, again, it was just how we, you know, just how we calculated, we said, rather than them being eight hundred square foot, if they were seven hundred square foot, what would the unit density be? Can you park it? Yep, okay. What if the restaurants weren't viable for the site, given that we know that in the future, once this is built, the two tire shops are gonna be restaurants? You really need it there, right? So, but again, you're right, that is a separate, uh, piece of the puzzle. We definitely are looking for the concept plan and a, and a minor amendment with a reasonable number.
Let's finish this part first, see how that goes.
So, affordable housing.
Yes.
Um, do we plan on, well, I'm sorry, do you plan on accepting vouchers for, for this property?
Um, the way that the project personally, uh, currently pencils, it's an extremely difficult project. Um, I'm not a affordable housing guru. I would, I would go back to what I just said a minute ago. If the project had a higher density of units, then it would probably pencil with workforce. Uh, I know that, of, in an affordable situation, I have talked to vendors about this site, and they would typically want about a hundred units of density. Um, and so, then we would have like, you know, two mixed vendors. What I would suggest instead makes sense is that for a marquee location, you put a marquee project, and then, a block away, you put a, a affordable project, or a workforce housing project. And that's what I plan on doing, is coming back for you with, hey, here's a perfect location. The site parameters on this site are extremely challenging. Mixed use is extremely challenging. We've got a lot of hurdles, you know, to get through the point where we're submitting a site plan and getting it approved. I don't think this is the right spot for what you're proposing, but I think that, you know, right around the corner, I know of a spot that we're talking to today that is perfect for workforce and maybe some affordable, and, and it works financially. At the end of the day, if it doesn't work financially, it just doesn't work.
Just saying, we have a long waitlist for affordable housing right now. So, when you talk about, uh, talking about prioritizing certain things, you know-
Well, our, you know, our, our design team works on affordable all the time, they've introduced me to some folks, I've talked to some folks, you know. I think the first step is, is get the project approved. As far as what the unit mix is, there's gonna be a market study, we'll submit the site plan with Bill Hunt, and, you know, follow the parameters that are determined here today, if we were fortunate enough to get that far.
Let me ask you or Mr. Longmore a question. It might be more toward Mr. Longmore, being a real estate attorney. Is it, is it, isn't there some counties in, in Maryland that you have to accept a voucher? I mean, if it meets the parameters of price, number of people, things like that?
I know there is some counties that had, because I was on the workforce housing task force for our county fifteen years ago, where we proposed a system that was not adopted by the county. Uh, but there, there are systems where, when you build new developments, there's required to be allocated certain number of affordable units for a certain amount of time. I know Montgomery County had a system like that at one point. Um, I, I'm not an expert on that, but I know that some of them do require that. There's also fair housing issues and all that, that you can't discriminate based on certain criteria, but there, the pricing of the unit can be set by the, by the landlord, you know, to do that based on the market.
Right, which may not meet the criteria, but I, I was thinking, I don't do as much real estate as I used to, but I was thinking that either Maryland or St. Mary's, it wouldn't just be St. Mary's, but you know, there's the federal protected classes of people, and Maryland has more than the federal protected classes that federal has.
Certainly.
And I thought source of income was added to Maryland's, um, protected classes. It comes up, every time I talk rental with, with somebody, I have people say that they cannot be denied by source of income anymore. And I'm not saying that this project, probably the price would outlast that, but, um, I don't think it would be something that, you know, in this project, that it would probably go on because of the high end.
I mean, it's, again, it's a great business model, I just happen to be a market rate, um, you know, guy. I know that the affordable is subsidized, and there's great programs for that, and it's, you know, and also, you know, getting HUD loans, if that's the route that you want to go. So, you know, there, it's a great program, I'm not against it, I'm just, I, I'm not that far along in the process. I will tell you this, there are jurisdictions that I've worked in that say, hey, we want to have one or two percent, you know, um, to be affordable. And that's something that's actually part of the county code or the city code. And, you know, generally speaking, when those types of, um, locations and jurisdictions, you know, those are the ones that are growing seven thousand, eight thousand units a year. I mean, they're, they're out there, you know, where you guys might be in twenty years, you know, they're there now, growing those types of jobs and people coming to the, to the, to the community. I think that happens more in the south of here-
Yeah.
Than it does in this region.
I'll move on past that. Explain the two hundred and twenty-one live, work, and play units. I mean, makes it sound like each one of them's got a pool in it and a, and a hot tub, I mean, are they just, they're basically condos or apartments?
Yeah, they're, they're luxury apartments.
Luxury apartments.
Yeah, I mean, I would think that like Settlers Landing, you know, and, and the, and the comparable apartments around here, those are luxury apartments, more or less. Um, so, we'll have that, but we're gonna have more of the, the collaborative approach, you're not gonna get out of your car and walk up three stories, you're gonna park in a garage, or you're gonna park out back, walk in the building, go up an elevator. No matter where you park, there's always gonna be an elevator located conveniently, there's gonna be a large clubhouse space, you're not gonna have to go to a separate building to go to the fitness center. So, it's gonna be, you know, it's gonna be mixed use right there together. The live, work, and play model, I mean, it's just the same one that, you know, all these developments use all over the country, but basically, what it means is, you know, if you're working from home, you're gonna be able to work from home where you live, I don't know that you'll do it in your unit all the time, you'll probably do it in one of the common areas. Um, you know, the play aspect, you know, is the fact that we've got a lot of amenities baked into this, um, not only interior for the sole use of residents, most of ours are actually woven into the fabric of the community.
Okay. How, how many corporate suites?
Um, again, based on a market study, but I, I mean, I'd, I'd like to do all corporate suites personally, but I, I, I don't think that that's what's gonna be reasonable. You know, typically in a, in a market rate apartment, um, if somebody wants a corporate suite at this place, you know, then basically, it's signed by their employer, and it's paid by their employer. So, you don't know it's a corporate suite, you don't know the guy or the gal that lives there, or the family that lives there has a corporate suite, but I think there's an opportunity for some of these businesses to have corporate suites. Some of these corporate suites will be lived in, you know, Monday to Friday, some of them will be potentially vacant. Corporate suites do affect the, the amount of interaction that you have. Um, I mean, I had a corporate suite for five years, you know, but I still live down here, you know?
Now, are the corporate suites, in addition to the two twenty-one and the twelve townhouses, or it's all-
It's part of the mix.
It's all part of the number?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have a lot of one-bedroom units, we have a few efficiencies, we've got some, some two bedrooms, we've, we've tried to make our unit mix work. Our three bedrooms, we put in the townhomes to make that, you know, a better use of that. And that's another, that's another opportunity where, you know, folks that may not be making, you know, engineer money, you know, if you have two people that you're friends with, that you want to get a townhome, that'll actually be an affordable price point for you, you know?
And these are all rentals? Everything's rental?
Rentals, yeah, we, we've stayed away from the, um, the condo model or the for-sale.
Sure. Is, is it gonna be an on-site?
Yeah, there'll be-
Manager?
There'll be a big, there'll be a management office, absolutely, there'll be a couple of building engineers, there'll be a, a leasing, um, person full-time, probably a community manager, I mean, there's, there's gonna be a, I think the, the numbers that we have to go by on parking are like six or seven, but there, there'll probably be, you know, four or five employees full-time.
Okay. Two more questions, I'll let you, I think there's one for Mr. Hobson. Um, under the staff report, when it talks about buffer yard requirements and PUD requirements, it's kind of confusing. I, I know you went over buffer yards, I guess basically what I'm asking, does this plan ask for any variances or reductions in required buffer yards?
No, none.
One's just less because of the state highway?
Yes, that was a seventy-five-foot, uh, buffer yard, and they spell it out in the, in the-
I didn't, just wanted to make sure that it's-
It goes from the initial right-of-way line, and then with the taking over the years, I think it was, uh, I'm not sure of the date, but, um-
Well, right, but I just wanted to ask, it's no, where are you gonna come back and, and ask the Board of Control for a variance? and, and ask the Board of Labor for a variance? That's what's required as being what's provided?
Correct.
What's provided, okay. And the sensitive area analysis, you touched on that with Army Corps of Engineers?
Yes.
That was for the wetlands or the pond?
For the wetlands.
That's next to the pond?
Yes.
Okay.
We want to make sure we had those nailed down. We, our initial design, first submittal concept plan showed those wetlands going all the way up to the road and bisecting the site. And so, so we had wetlands disturbance and everything else. And once we got the, the environmental consultant out there to flag the wetlands and then get the Corps of Engineers out to firm them, it's only the southern portion of the project. And that, and that's all because of former President Trump policies regarding wetlands and how they're regulated. They no longer regulate the ephemeral streams, which is runoff from roadways.
Okay. All right. That's it from me.
Mr. Higgs, did, did you guys do a needs analysis of like the housing market in this area before you approached this project?
Anecdotally, I would say. I've studied it extensively myself. I do want to do a, a market study. Here's my personal opinion of it, just knowing, you know, having, you know, been in this business and done this in towns such as this for many years. We're going to build a good product. We're going to provide a, a fair rent. And, you know, where would you live? Are you going to live in the best place for a couple hundred dollars more if you can afford it? Or are you going to live in the, the garden apartment that's 20 years old? Are you going to walk up three flights of stairs? You tell me. So I, I think we'll do okay.
I mean, the designs are unbelievable. They're way over what I was expecting to see today. But that's also where I'm kind of puzzled, because in our earlier meetings, one of them, we were asking questions about workforce housing, low-income housing. You know, I even made some kind of anecdotal statement about, we were getting rid of projects in Philadelphia where I'm from.
I don't remember any of that.
Six-story, you know, and, and that's what I thought was happening here. So there's some concerns there, but ever since I've been on this, on this commission, all I've heard from, from people in our meetings and, and just out and about is that there's a huge need for housing for retired veterans with disabilities. There's a huge need for workforce housing and that, from the NWA CP Housing Committee, just talking about that people are running out of vouchers and they can't afford their rent. So it just, I mean, I see you're going to maximize your investment when you build something like this, but it's just, it's, it's kind of confusing because it just, it seems off from what I was expecting and I think off from what the county needs right now.
Well, if you look at, if you look at workforce housing, you're, you're talking about folks making 80 to 100,000 a year. That's a 300, $350,000 a year mortgage.
Right, right. I mean, like, I live in workforce housing, and I live in a townhouse, and, you know, the mortgage is like $1,700 a month or something like that. And I got a partial view of the bay. And I, I couldn't see myself starting off life now wanting to have a view of Mr. Tire, you know, who are one of the busiest intersections.
Right on the back and you're looking at wetlands.
Like, like, well, yeah, hopefully if you have one facing there, and those would probably be the, the higher rate, you know, things. But just like, the location, other than that very confined thing, doesn't seem like a desirable location where you could even get people to pay. I mean, unless, unless, I'm missing something, like, is, is the marketing, is it that?
Right.
Are we that desperate for any kind of housing that, that the, the demand is there?
And I'm, 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 I'm here to say that I've looked at your comprehensive plan, your development plan for Lexington Park, your development district. I've talked to tons of people. We think that we're offering a product that, you know, is different than what you or I might want. But what the younger folks typically want is they want to, they want to be in an interactive situation. So that's why we say corporate suites. That's why we talk about networking, collaborative, you know, approaches, you know?
Right, right.
This is, this is your development district. It's quasi-urban, and it fits. And we think that by, you know, delivering a nice product, that we will have enough rents. Fortunately, there are programs available where you can, you know, get, get subsidized rent. And so there are programs like that that would help.
Now, mind you, I'm not against the project because of you're, you're targeting a higher, you know, scale or higher rental units. My concern always is when somebody comes in, makes a huge investment here, what's the, what's it going to look like 20 years out? And is there going to be, you know, enough demand 20 years out? Just like with gas stations not putting in electric charging. That's one of my big, my big pet peeves, you know? Like, are, we're not selling gasoline cars anymore. So like, is there going to be, you know, that kind of demand for this with the locate, you know, with the concern of the location?
Well, the next step for us, if we get the approval, is we'll, we'll get a market study done so we can go right into plans. And then, you know, over time, you know, a property like this does adjust. I've seen mixed-use projects where they've had like, you know, they were slated for retail for, you know, and then they found that it was vacant all the time, and then they went to the town, and the town says, sure, we'll give you a variance, and then they put in, you know, units in there. And then some towns, you know, some places probably go in the opposite direction, and they don't, you know, they don't have enough commercial. That's, that was the whole reason to say in the minor amendment, hey, well, if we're going to look at it from this standpoint, we got to do a minor amendment anyways, should we not look at, rather than luxury apartments, would this thing pencil with just more units and cater to the workforce housing need? And, and the answer is, yeah, that's a great way to handle what we have to do anyways.
I think, I think, I think what was told to us earlier was that this is walkable to the entry-level jobs in the shopping centers, and that's not the kind of clientele that a high-rent apartment is going to attract.
Well, so the, the walkable aspect of it is the walkability of the entire community. You know, I, I've gone to the site and had meetings there, you know? When I park there, I walk across the street to Harris Teeter. I walk, you know? If I had to go to Staples, I'd probably walk. When you're in, when you're in an environment where it's just as convenient to walk, in fact, even if it takes a few more minutes, wouldn't you walk? I mean.
I would.
I don't just hop in the car. If I can walk somewhere and it's, you know, it's reasonable, I'm going to walk. I think, I think there's reasonable stuff within walking distance, but I think really the aspect of it, that's the walkability that's going to be appealing, is the fact that when you do get home, you can, you can walk across the street.
I, I just, you know.
To the grocery store.
Well, I'll end it with this. I think it's.
Mr. Chairman, could we, can we get back to the substance of it? I mean, we can do a market study plan, we can do.
Well, no, no.
I want to get into the substance of it. This is capitalism, his money. He is the one that's going after.
But Mr. Sinclair.
His loss.
But Mr. Sinclair.
And then he could turn it into affordable housing, is what he's trying to say, if that is not what is going to work. I want to get into what's the impact on roads, buildings, schools. We haven't even touched the schools.
But Mr. Sinclair, that's what, that's what I'm trying to get at.
Good member that asked, asked a question.
I know, I'm just.
I'm, I'm trying to get at that. So, so this is a prime location for affordable housing, where people could walk to these lower-paid jobs, right? Would you agree with me with that, Mr. Sinclair?
I don't know where he wants to go with this. He's already presented what he wants.
What I'm saying is, what other kind of properties like this exist in the county right now that we can come down later down the line, and hopefully the developer does come back down the line and builds us more affordable housing, it's probably not going to be as walkable as a location like this. That's what I'm saying, I think this is missed opportunity here. You know, you're not going to put it back in Lexington Park. That's, that's, that's a disservice to our community. You know, you're going to put it in another area where there's, there's no sidewalks and everyone's got to, you know, own a car, then it's not affordable housing, you know? So I'm just going to, you're right. I'm, I'm beating that horse.
Buster some mixed-use developments in, in this area. Again, I've, I've seen it happen. You start in one area, one neighborhood, and it radiates, and it goes to the outer areas, and that's how it works. It doesn't start from the inner. It's, it starts from the outer and it works in. So I, I think all of these things are part of where we need to go. Of course, we want to have a diversity. We want people to live in that building that are of all different ages and races and, you know, everything. That's what you want. That makes the place interesting. It's not going to be just a bunch of nerdy engineers. It's going to be a mix. It's a mixed-use project. It's going to have a mixed-use housing component. If we can figure out a way to incorporate disabilities and all those other things, those are people smarter than me. I'm just saying, hey, I'm here to present this. I can get it to work financially. I've got investors who are interested in it. I do think that there is an opportunity that we could, you know, introduce that element. In fact, it might be a necessity. I just don't, I don't have that answer today, but I think, I think that what we have before you allows you the opportunity to give us that opportunity to, to figure it out and be successful over the long term, this project.
Thank you, Mr. Sir.
Well, years ago, we also had EDC, Economic Development, and we discussed workforce housing. We, we wanted to have a mix. If you came in and you had a big subdivision, 1/3 or whatever, I don't know what the figures were at the time, had to be dedicated to workforce or affordable housing. The units might have been smaller, they looked the same, they didn't stand out from one another. We were trying to make it all-inclusive. And that's what I would like to see also here. But he's also taking the gamble, and he knows what his, what his, what his other thing is. What we need to do is to have the comprehensive plan reviewed and take a look at going back and doing the affordable housing so that we can have a different workforce that moves on up the line to get to these garden apartments. We just can't have them come in and not work. We, we just, we just can't do that. I don't know about you, I'm getting tired of paying property taxes on that farm that I've got. So I'd like to see young engineers, tech people come into the county and pay their part.
That's true.
And support that base. That base is still the 800-pound monster that's in that room down there. That's our only, we have tried everything to diversify. They are doing UAVs. They are moving here. They need a place like this to come to.
That's true. That's true.
Okay? And that, that's all that I'm getting to, is that, is this a proper setting to tell him that he should have? And is that our role as to tell him he should have?
I wasn't telling him what to do. I was just saying, I was, I was, I was taken aback. I thought there was, you know, different opportunity. But you said, there are different, there's going to be, they said, some, some studios, some one-bedroom, two-bedrooms. So there is some flexibility, and if the market, you know, analysis does turn out a certain way.
And I think as a planning commission, that's part of our planning, is to get with economic development and have a seminar on affordable housing. And what are we going to do with it? Because everyone is coming through here, we have not imposed a 1/3 or a percentage into any of these subdivisions that'll come in in here.
But we've had the discussion, so I mean.
Yeah, but discussion is not taking care of the problem.
True. No, it's not fixing.
I looked at this site for over two months before I came up with the, something that I could work. This was too good a site to not figure something out. I'd looked at all those models. I, I tried. What I found was, when I got to this, this area of volume with the mixed-use element, then it was lightning in a bottle. That's, okay, wow, I got something that'll work. I looked at all the other models. I couldn't make them pencil. I don't think the economic conditions have changed. I think they've gotten worse. It's going to be very hard to, you know, to do this with that. Now, that said, if I were able to subsidize it, get the same rents, and have the government give me the difference, then that works. You know, rents are rents. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to make sure that we invest and that we have an appreciating asset and that, you know, the rents are paid and not, you know, a bunch of delinquencies and, you know, we can't have a 95%. We need a 95% vacancy rate, not a, not an 82%. You know, that would be unsuccessful. I definitely, you know, don't want to do that. So there's a mix. We'll have to.
I think, I think also people get confused over the, the terminology of workforce versus affordable housing.
Right. Yeah, these, these units are sizable enough.
I mean, I, I think a police, teachers, carpenters, skilled tradesmen that can afford, they're making 45 and 50 dollars an hour as a carpenter, but they're not high-tech.
Right.
But they can afford to go in there too.
I mean, plumbers probably make as much as tech workers.
I don't know about you, but the last bill I got from a plumber was.
Yeah. I think when we talk workforce in St. Mary's County, we're talking about the, you know, the technical folks. That's a large percentage of the base. They're just, they're, they're young, they're, they're just moving into town, and that's the workforce that you want to retain and keep so that, you know, the county grows and, you know, this is a unique county, so let's, let's support that.
Let me ask one more question, Howard. I won't beat this subject.
All right.
That the two Joes have already talked about pretty much. But I just had a, a general, I'm not sure if Mr. Castlemus or Ms. Hollander can answer this about the Leonardtown apartments that were built on Route 5, opposite the college. How many units were built? And if either one of you know, how many units are rented?
You mean down by, so it's right, Riken?
Yes.
Well, yeah, before you get to Riken, on the same side, all them buildings are all high-end rentals.
I don't know if they were prepared to answer that question.
2500.
It's what my daughter got.
They're high. I was just wondering.
Sounds like workforce housing to me.
No, I was just wondering how many were, were vacant, because when it first came about, they were really slow to get people at 22, 2300 for a three-bedroom and 2100 for a two-bedroom and 2,000 for a one-bedroom and stuff, so.
Is that, is that in county or is that Leonardtown proper?
It's Leonardtown.
Yeah, yeah, right. I don't think they would have it.
Not, not, I was just wondering if, if somebody knew how many units were built and what the actual occupancy rate was, because it sounds like these are going to be comparable to them price-wise. I'm just assuming, I don't know price points, but that's my only question.
Location is what sets it apart and the, and the walkability. Those are, you know, that's kind of a rural area. I mean, if this project was, you know, situated in downtown Leonardtown.
Well, that's where that is, Leonardtown.
Yeah, well, outside of the walkable region, in, in my view. This is, this location is, is perfect. It's, it's the, right there on the backside of 235 in the shopping center, next to the retail and the, and the rural. I mean, this is a great.
It's walkable to the town central, but it just doesn't have the shopping ability.
Right.
Yeah, just, just a curious comment. I didn't mean to put either one of you on the spot.
Mr. Evans, did you have something? You raised your hand a while back.
Just a, just a very, that's right, just a very general comment. So having been in one of these chairs for a long, long time, I'm a proponent of mixed use, always have been since the 70s. There's a place for it here. But Mr. Longmore was being a bit modest. He sat on a task force in '27, another in 2011, and there's, at that time, the county wouldn't, refused to stand up those kinds of task forces, so the Chamber of Commerce did. But there was an enormous amount of work done. And there was another, in 12, the Real, the Real Property Research Group, the study as well. They put together an enormous amount of work. They brought it forward to county commissioners, and they did nothing with it. So it's very hard to come up with these plans in your head where you have leadership that refuses to embrace it. And that's, and that, that is a problem. We don't, and I, I beat this up a lot. I mean, we don't have master plans for village and town centers. There's places, a company like yours could do revitalization projects and address workforce housing. The numbers for, the, the numbers for workforce housing and low-income housing are all spelled out in the, in those task force reports. Now, they're, you understand, that's 10 years ago.
Yeah.
We, we have not updated those numbers, and those numbers now, today, would be much higher. We've had the Sage Group come here two or three different times and explain in detail what, what might work for us. And we were, and for some reason, we just refused to do it. We, the county at that time cast adrift the housing authority. They separated themselves from the housing authority, which I believe to be an enormous mistake. And so if you're gonna distance yourself from the type of housing that everybody's been talking about, you find yourself where we are now.
Right.
We do, because not everybody, and I've made this comment a lot, if you're an engineer, unless you, you plan on taking up a second job in the service industry work, workforce, you better find a place for some of these folks to live. Because if you don't, what's gonna happen? You're gonna wind it with a, with a, with a workforce that commutes.
Right.
And that's not necessarily what we want. It's not what we have. But to your point with regard to other opportunities, there are other opportunities in the, in the town centers. Infrastructurally, they probably need to be tweaked because the problem, again, isn't necessarily, you know, people wanting to come here. It's gotta be economically feasible for them to come here.
Right.
And, and the infrastructure has to support it. And so having sat here and listened to, to folks talk about workforce housing and all the rest, that for all of these years, just to have them turn away studies and, that are, that are comprehensive, if you, if, it would be hundreds of thousands of dollars if you had to pay for this. But the county didn't pay for it. I mean, they didn't, it didn't cost them a dime. All they had were some support folks that helped out in those meetings, but it didn't cost them anything. If you had to pay for it, it would've cost hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Right.
And maybe that's what it takes. Maybe you've gotta spend hundreds of thousands of dollars before somebody will actually, you know, put some value to it. But that's, that is a damn shame. It's not that the information isn't available and it's not that it wasn't put together. It's that it wasn't, it was not acted on, period. So however well, however this goes for you guys, down the line, if it, if it's approved and you get it and, and you're gonna move forward and, you know, there's maybe other opportunities, I would invite you to come back to look to find out where those opportunities might, might be. Because I believe that there are places here that are, that address the issue, the issue that we're talking about with regard to workforce housing and, and affordable housing and that they are economically viable for the person that builds them.
We've identified about a half dozen sites. So one thing I do wanna mention, you know, one aspect of the mixed-use development that, you know, we haven't really said, but I'll say it, is transit-oriented developments. That's pretty much where most of these projects are really hot. And I did talk to, you know, some of the county folks, talked to one of the county commissioners about it, you know? I mean, I think part of the paradigm shift moving forward is to figure out how to make, you know, St. Mary's County, you know, a transit-oriented thing where it's not, you know, a, you know, a bus that's just for certain people. That, that should be a, there should be a transportation element that is something that is convenient. You get on it and you get to where you gotta go and you get back. Because guess what? If they have that, if they have a transit-oriented development, okay, and, you know, and they're doing ride sharing, if they need a car or whatever and they don't have a car payment, that's how they can afford to have that environment. So, you know, I think in the future, you know, there is an opportunity for some people to say, you know, I don't really need a car. If I need a car, I'll get a Uber, you know, or whatever. So that's really kind of what I'm, you know, kinda coming at you with is, this is a walkable, transit-oriented. We don't, we still have the transit system here, but I think that that's something that can be addressed. And I don't wanna get into that debate or discussion, but that's, I would absolutely love to have my location be thought of as transit-oriented, other than just hopping in a car.
So, so it is transit-oriented. I mean, we have, we have a county bus system. And we were talking earlier about, you know, the possible location of a, of a, of a bus shelter, a transit shelter.
Definitely.
So how can you be saying that this is...
Is there, I'm just, I guess...
No, I'm just...
I'm used to metros.
Okay.
When I say transit-oriented, it's usually a light rail.
But I'm, I'm confused with terminology and I'm not picking on you. I'm just like, transit-oriented development means you've got some transit-related fixture that you're building with the development. And you didn't even show a simple bus shelter.
Yeah.
And that's one of my follow-up questions.
Yeah, typically our, you know, our, we'll have an opportunity to, to have like pickup at the site. I don't know that there'll be room for a bus, but it certainly could be like...
Well, the buses we have in the county are small. They're like...
I would imagine that there's a bus stop right along FDR Boulevard, right next to our location. I mean, typically if it's a...
They stop where they, yeah, they stop at the need to stop. Yeah, kinda at any needed stop and stuff. Not as fixed as other...
Yeah, they stop quickly too. So be on the lookout.
Yeah. A lot of them are flag stops too, so they don't actually have shelters.
Gotcha.
But with the volume of people you're gonna have here, it'd be definitely something good to look into and try to...
I think just past our entrance on FDR would be a good pickup site.
Yeah.
Because it gets, kinda gets away from the congested part and it's just, you know, right there next to us and so...
I think it's an opportunity. It shouldn't be, shouldn't be too hard to put one in.
Yeah, I mean, again, having, having the ability to say that, hey, I had, you know, Joe Fazeca say that I had a transit-oriented development. Hey, thank you very much. I didn't realize that. But we do plan on having our own, you know, bus shelter per se. But the transit-oriented developments are very big for young folks because not all of them have cars.
Any other questions?
Nope.
A last couple of points, Mr. Chairman, just to mention. I know, I know we've been discussing this for a while. The, a question was raised about schools. All the TEC agencies have reviewed and, and we have all the approval slips for concept site plan. We're happy to address any of those with you. As I know, the commission's well aware that it's not required to meet APF at this point, but we have to show that we may meet it and all the agencies have reviewed it and we're at the appropriate step there. There is also quite a bit of discussion about retention of the young workforce in our community. I know from being involved in the Chamber and the Navy Alliance in the past, how important that is to the, to the base and the success of it and the contractors that support it and other businesses that support it. I just draw the commission's attention to the letters of support that we have from University System of Maryland at Southern Maryland that is on Board Docs. The Southern Maryland Navy Alliance through Gary Kessler also submitted a letter in support of it. I have two letters and I'll just share with you the form. I have a copy for all of you if you wanna pass them around, from individuals that, that were representing Harris Teeter and Giant Food, both saying they support it because both those shopping is nearby. And there's also a letter of support of Mr. Krylich, who I believe may also speak tonight, that I, we have copies for all of you, so we got those this evening, so I wanted to pass those around. So just wanted to note that for the record as well.
Any other questions?
I think we have copies.
For these guys in front of Eric...
Excuse me? I believe the applicant is...
For the applicant as, as a whole?
Yeah, next part, we're gonna move to his public testimony.
Okay, we'll take a break.
I got two.
Well, I'll let everybody know, we don't normally go past ten o'clock.
That's why I'm...
Just, you know, don't normally go past ten o'clock. I'm gonna leave it like that. We're gonna take a five-minute break for the board members.
I got it, so it's right here.
I have both these pens since I got one in 2016.
That one was sabotaged.
I'm gonna...
Okay.
And you can see, Mr. Cassidy.
We've got a long way to go and a short time to get there.
And he was the only one that...
Derek Reed. Okay. From once we left off, I need to know if there's any more questions from the board. Where's the applicant at? Everybody go home?
He turned into a pumpkin.
Come on, Mr. Longmore, get back up here.
Ten o'clock is approaching, sir.
All right. What... Mr. Hall, any questions?
I mean, I... Yeah, we've already talked about everything.
Well, after this, we're going to public testimony, so if you've got questions, now's the time. Now's the time to go for them.
The only thing that I... We never talked about any type of remediation right there coming out on FDR. And then I'm just concerned about that left turn right there going... Coming in from St. Andrews Church, turning into... Into the facility. Those are two big trouble areas. I mean, so have we at least looked at? Well, in my opinion, am I the only one that view those as problematic?
No, I agree with you.
Well, I agree with you. That's why we had Ms. Chandler, and I asked her about the length that they had from the entry off of Route Four to go into the project itself is right across from the church. So it gives us enough length to...
But you're talking about on FDR Boulevard, right?
No, no, no. I'm talking about it was kind of... I think you kind of made me think about it. Turning off of FDR, coming into... Going on to St. Andrews Church. I'm looking at the queuing that'll be there, coming from... Coming down St. Andrews Church away from 235 when they have to turn left, you know, where they're merging.
When they turn to go to Lowe's?
Heading toward the landfill you're talking?
Right. And so right there, where the two roads merge, there's going to be a left-hand turn to go into the facility.
A dedicated left.
It's a stackable lane with, you know, you could stack cars on it. So, but quite frankly, if I lived there...
So we get an extra lane in there?
And you can turn it all on FDR.
Okay. Right. It'll go where the median is now.
Yeah.
That, I think it's a 10-foot-wide median there. That'll snake down to two foot from...
How far down does it go?
It'll probably go all the way to the intersection straight, and then the taper will start, and then you'll have the stacking lane.
Okay.
It's a major improvement.
It's probably be 300 feet or so.
That's one of the biggest things I saw. I was tickled right to death when you said it.
Major improvement.
Well, those are really the two...
To the project that we're asking for.
Those are kind of the two big traffic improvements, the right turn lane and then the adjustment of that median to allow that left-hand turn.
Are these amenities, are they what you guys talk with with regard to DPW? Jim, did you want to chime in or not?
Yes, that's correct. We've talked about every one of these things.
Okay. Okay. It's fine.
Mr. Gotts, tell us who you are, buddy.
Gotts, Director of Public Works.
There you go. Thank you, sir. Good to see you tonight. I was afraid I wasn't going to get you up here. Okay. Is there any more questions for the applicant?
We have plenty of EDUs.
They are available from what we understand, and that would be part of the process where...
You didn't have to acquire any TDOS to get in.
Kristi, come on up here. I'm going to get you up here, too. If Jim's got to get up, then you have to get up, too.
I saw her back there. She was... She thought I was not going to say that.
I don't want Jim to think I was picking on him.
Kristy Hollander from State Mary's County Metropolitan Commission. There are sufficient EDUs for this project in Marley Taylor.
Okay.
Have to upgrade that pump station, which they're fully aware of.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else?
Thank you.
I'm going to open it up to public testimony, but I'd like to think I was going to get done this tonight, but, you know, the hour and all that, I'm giving it my best shot. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. At this time, on public testimony, on the sign-up sheets that we have out there, I have two names. The first is James Krilich. I think... I hope I pronounced that correctly. You'd like to come up? And I think I did swear you in earlier this evening, sir?
He's not going to hear that.
You can stand at the microphone, or you can sit at the desk.
Improve your audio system. It's really very low, and people in the back can't really hear very clearly what you're talking about. Thank you for listening.
Yes, sir. You give us your name and address, please?
Dear members of the Planning Commission...
Can you give us your name? Can you give us your name and address, please, to start with?
I can't hear you.
Okay. Why don't you come up to the desk and sit there, and maybe you can hear us a little bit? Could you give us your name and address, please?
Again, cannot hear you. You want me to talk? I'm sorry.
No problem. Can you give us your name and address to start out with?
I'm Colonel James Krilich, United States Army retired. I live at 106... I live at the end of St. Jerome's Neck Road.
Okay. Grab a microphone.
I live at the end of St. Jerome's Neck Road down in Damrun.
Okay.
Do you want my street address?
No, sir, that's fine. We have... I have it here on the sheet.
I'm Eddie Whittingales in Welshmouth's neighbor.
Okay.
Maybe you know the neighborhood.
Okay.
A nice place to live.
Yes, sir.
Dear members of the Planning Commission, I strongly support Chesapeake FDR. I'm 77, retired, widower, with no family. I love living in St. Mary's County. I have sufficient retirement incomes, multiple medical insurance brands, so I can choose wherever I want to live without any financial distress. I want to continue to live here in St. Mary's County instead of moving to a condo in Washington, DC. Although I qualify to live in the Veterans Home in Charlotte Hall, I prefer to live in Chesapeake FDR. Or if I go to Washington, DC, I live near the Army-Navy Club. I spend much of my time researching scientific startup research companies for my private investments. And living in Chesapeake FDR, I believe, would provide me the daily opportunity to meet and expand my network of leading edge engineers and scientists and other retirees and students. Networking, what I see is that building becoming an economic center of gravity for this county. People that want to be somebody, or are somebody, or have good business relationships in scientific research, they want to be there to meet one another. I most certainly would welcome the atmosphere of military, civilian, technical, professional, and academic citizens as I seek to expand my network of people of significant consequence in my search for investment growth opportunities. I believe that your approval of the Chesapeake FDR will help retain high-income retirees. Most people now, they're leaving the state of Maryland. And provide a high quality of life and security for the people that we want to bring here. We're competing against Huntsville. We need smart people. This is the place to be. You've got the businesses, you've got the school, you've got the Smart Center. And provide the support for the development and research projects at the Naval Air Station Patuxent River, our academic community, our civilian medical facilities, and the personnel working in the Smart Building and adjacent business and scientific facilities. I'd also like the people who are watching this program to remind them that you're working here without any pay. You're volunteers. You're giving up a lot of time to go through a lot of problem-solving that a lot of these people in this county just can't even understand. You should be saluted sincerely for what you're doing as a private citizen to try and make this county the best place that I could think of wanting to live. I can remember what it looked like driving down from Washington, DC to Gate Two. Just horrible-looking land, sunken, and now you look at it, it's landscaped. The streets have water flow. You have beautiful trees. You have shrubbery. It's like Hollywood. I mean, it's really beautiful living here. There's no trash on the road. The buildings look fantastic. I can go back to my hometown of Tacoma, Washington. I grew up on a gravel street. Born 1944, 2022, it's still a gravel street. You can't find a gravel street in St. Mary's County. This is the place to live, and your Planning Commission does a fantastic job making this the place I want to live. I hope you'll get this building approved, because I want to be in it. I want to be mixing with the people that are bringing the new ideas to our community, and that's where the money's going to be made. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Can I applaud it? No. That was very good.
Question?
That was excellent.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for talking about Hollywood. It's a very nice place.
Exactly.
Okay. Our next and only other person I have on the list is Tim. I think it's Tullis.
Close enough.
I'm sorry if I mispronounced that.
I'm Tullis. I'm a youth pastor at Patuxent Baptist Church. I live out of 21924 Oakley Road down an avenue. I just wanted to say, we're the church that's supposed to be building across the road over there. We do have our permits and everything ready to go, just run into a big hike increase in what it's going to cost. So we're still planning to build there. We're still on... We're still pushing forward, but we would like to have these folks as a neighbor. What we offer this community is ministry, and ministry is the people, and this would bring people into that spot, and we would love to be able to have them as a neighbor. It's a very welcoming place, and so we just wanted to say, as from Patuxent Baptist Church, we'd be happy to have them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. It's good to hear from you again. Is there anybody else in the audience? Mr. Hunt, do you want to check to see if we... Because this hearing started back in April, we were still receiving calls from the public. We're going to keep doing so tonight, so we'll just check to see if we have any calls coming in.
Hi, Ms. Wood. Do you have anyone on the line to speak at the public hearing?
No, I do not.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else? Okay. I'm going to go ahead and close public testimony, and I'll open it back up. Chris, is there any... It's your turn for rebuttal.
Mr. Chairman, we don't have any rebuttal testimony. I know that Mr. Hunt noted the site... The concept site plan standards. We believe we've met them, presented them throughout the presentation, so given the late hour, I don't intend to go through each one unless the commission has any questions for us.
No, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Longmore. Okay. I'm going to close that up and close all testimony and begin deliberations with the board. Been a long night, but we've gone through a lot of information. If there's anybody that wants to talk about it, we can do that, but certainly Mrs. Chandler and her group were probably on the top of the list. Not that you're not important to us, Mr. Hobson. Mind you, or anybody else, and Mr. Higgs and the rest of the folks that testified tonight. But you know from before that we were very worried about the traffic part of the ordeal. They answered that, I believe, to the best of their ability and to the liking of the board. Of course, we'll never like it because... Completely because you're going to have traffic. So, I mean, it does... But they have done some... A couple of great improvements to that. That's what we were really worried about. Does anybody else have any parts they want to talk about on this?
I just got a quick comment. I think they've done a good job with the what's shown there. I still have a slight reservation about the fact that a lot more people use that area than are noted on the plan. You know, even though it's not included, you know, as they talked about the commercial construction out along 235, all them places are not included in these... None of the commercial out there is included. So the numbers show one thing, but in true retrospect, it's a whole lot more traffic than it actually shows. Not that it proposes that much more, but it's a... You know, if you travel FDR around that area quite a bit, there's a lot of... And I think Ms. Robrick or somebody touched on it earlier about cars trying to come out of where Lowe's is and Five Below and BJ's to try to get out into the lanes, and some of them are crossing to go further down FDR, not towards St. Andrews or Route Four, but the other way. It's a lot of confusion through there, even now. So I'm just saying it's a... Just a heavily trafficked area, as everybody knows, as the applicant knows. That's my... I think the right turn lane is really a great thing on Route Four. I'm not 100% sure. It was talked about a little bit at the end about what Mr. Hall was talking about. I'm assuming you were talking about when you come off of 235 and turn on Route Four and making them the left into FDR, where they already have dedicated lanes, but I guess they're going to increase them by taking some concrete out the... They stayed it. I didn't realize that until we...
I think that was turning out of FDR.
No, no, no. It's turning off of St. Andrews into the facility, right there with those, right there by the church.
Gotcha. Okay. That's the only thing I had, is I think it's a congested area, so...
Any other comments?
We kept referring to the Development District Master Plan, and I think I appreciate those references, but I think that the corridor, the things that they were intending... What the intent of it was supposed to be was considering that all of FDR was complete. And so we're doing this analysis, understanding that FDR is not complete, and I'm not sure when that's going to happen and how that will impact this intersection. And we'll be sitting here complaining about what we did or did not do at this intersection, understanding that there was going to be an influx of traffic sometime in the future. And when we start considering developments like this, considering that we have a dying grapefruit corridor, I think that this is encouraging a lot of investment in areas that are going to make that area worse. So we have to consider that as well when we're looking at what we're doing within the Development District. And so I understand that this is in a silo. This looks like a great project, but I want to make sure that we consider the impact on the rest of the area.
Anybody else? Okay. Anybody like to consider making a motion?
Can I speak to that real quick, Howard? Before a motion is made?
Sure.
Just trying to take up more time.
No, I'm just...
I'm not going to make a motion, but if a motion is made, our motions seem to always have any road repairs or whatever the terminology is, any road improvements required by the state and county. We seem to forget to put in these motions, in my opinion, like that dedicated right turn. It's not required by the state or the county. So I think those things should be duly noted as a separate condition.
Should be a condition. Yes, sir.
In... The median strip work that they were talking about, because I don't think... I don't know if that's a state requirement, state road requirement or a county requirement.
If it's already included in their plan, do we have to...
I would just put in the motion that all road improvements that were discussed this evening have to be completed.
Perfect.
Since you mentioned it, you did kind of mention the cross... The intersection going across to the... Going across to the shopping center, and we haven't proposed any type of mitigation there. It's already a problem. If we put 240 units across and two restaurants, it's going to become... It's going to become worse.
I thought we did. I thought I made this suggestion, and the applicant was seen, you know, nodded in a favorable motion that they'd be willing to consider that if the county would allow a raised crosswalk along FDR.
We can put that in as a consideration.
Cars. You can't talk about crosswalk.
But that would actually slow down the vehicles going through, which would make the cars navigating that and being in that island in the middle a little bit safer, because they won't be going 45 or 50. If they want to keep their car in suspension gear, they'll be going 35, hopefully, or slower.
I don't know that we can put that in as a condition for the county road part of it.
Is that something Public Works can answer to here?
Been discussed. I don't know if we can put that condition on them. Mr. Hauser, you want to give me some insight on that?
I've tried to file it to make sure, but under discussion, we're talking right now, whether the feasibility of putting it as a condition, the raised crosswalk, we're not sure if the county will go for it or not. Since we can't, I think Mr. Gotts, Hunt confirmed tonight whether or not the county can go for it. I'd advise probably not putting that in as a condition at this time, because we don't know if we can uphold our end of the bargain on that one. Because on the one hand, we've suggested that might be possible. We'd like it, but wouldn't want this to have to come back before you all again, because that particular piece of the puzzle can't fit in. And if we would still be inclined to let this go forward without that raised crosswalk, we would need to amend the order to remove that condition, which, tale coming back here again. The advise and re-then, we can recommend it. Certainly, I think the developer is aware of that concern. Certainly, the county is aware we want to do it, and we can look into it, but I don't think it would be appropriate at this juncture prudent to put that in as a condition.
If Mr. Gotts could bring that up at a future commissioners' meeting, that, you know, that was one of the things that was touched on this tonight, seems how they're going to bring in new constituents into the county and into this development. That would be a consideration for you all to look into for the future. Anybody want to make a motion?
Not sure which one. You want to make it? Who's going to make it?
Go ahead. You want to make it, make it. If you want to make it, make it.
Okay.
In the matter of the Concept Site Plan, number CSP 21-0202, First Colony, Pod 5, having accepted the staff report and having made the finding that the objectives of Section 60.6 of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance has been met and noting that the reference project has met all of the requirements for concept approval, I move that the Concept Site Plan be approved with the following conditions. A, any road improvement or improvements required by the state and county must be concurrent with the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. And are we going to put the apron or the extension?
That all road improvements that were discussed tonight are to be completed before...
Required by the state.
Before occupancy.
That's what I said.
I think you better be specific.
Say it again for me, buddy.
Any road improvement or improvements required by the state and county must be concurrent with the issuance of the certificate of occupancy.
That's A.
In other words, they have to complete it before they get certificate of occupancy.
All right. Would you take an amendment? Mr. Van Kirk wants to discuss an amendment. I think that's to be what we discussed tonight.
Yeah, I think B...
Okay.
I think B should say, any road improvement agreed upon in the Concept Site Plan would also be concurrent with the issuance of the certificate of occupancy.
Mr. Hauser, you want to help us word that? I'd rather get the legal right now and get it over with.
I think probably divine in what the intention here is, a motion to the effect of addition to any road requirement that might be required, any road proposed, any road improvement that was proposed by the applicants in their presentation tonight also be included. I think that captures what the Planning Commission is trying to go for here. And any objections, or would you clarify that any further, Mr. Longmore?
Okay.
We good?
We're good.
Tell me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm good.
Thank you, Mr. Hauser. Okay. We have a motion? You're accepting what Mr. Hauser says? Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Sinclair, second by Mr. Evans. Any discussion on the motion? All right, I'll do roll call. Mr. Physikus, I warned you, you were number one tonight.
I'm one call, yes. Aye.
Okay. Mr. Van Kirk?
No.
Ms. Robrick?
No.
Okay. Mr. Hall?
No.
Mr. Sinclair?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. Okay. As I always say at the end, congratulations, but let's remember your neighbors in there, even though you've got a lot of neighbors to a lot of people in that corner. Make sure you take care of it. We gave you a premier site tonight. I'm counting on you all to take care of that. Okay?
Hobson, if I may, the next agenda item, the approval or, well, further discussion of the proposed amendment to the PUD. As I said in the beginning, the vote that was just taken on the concept plan, its success is stated on passage of the amendment to the PUD, allowing for increased units. But we already had discussion on that one. We already had a staff report. There's no need, I repeat, reopen the record at this time unless the chair feels differently. In discussion, if the chairman's so inclined, I think it'd be entirely appropriate, if the Planning Commission wants to, to just ask if there's further discussion of the amendment, as long as Mr. Norris does not object, he'll have a motion and take a vote with no discussion or presentation from staff or public, given that the record's closed.
I'll take most of that into consideration. The only thing I had about this was that Mr. Norris... The only thing I had about this was that Mr. Norris was looking for 291, whereas tonight we're doing, working with 233. It was also talked about that if the restaurants didn't work out right, that they would be putting in some extra, they might use that, those spots as extra housing. So, I, but with like a 250 number for that, for that increase in the amendment. That would be 41 short of what Mr. Norris wants, but the only thing that scares me is we give him that 41, then they're going to look for 41, for a spot that's going to put 41 spots in there, and I think it's tight enough. I think they've done an exceptional job with developing that corner right now. I'd hate to see that little piece of green space or anything get infringed upon in the future. So, just my personal choice, I'd like to see it held at 250 for that extra housing in that amendment. Does anybody have an opinion on that?
We support that.
It's a good idea.
I see it supported at the, where it was originally approved for, for the PUD.
Okay. All right. Well, then, since this is a discussion item, Mr. Hauser, you just will stay up here because we're going to make you work for it tonight.
7:30 tomorrow morning, sharp, I'm going to shoot the question to Mr. Weiscall for I don't get the chair up there in the future, but that's neither here nor there.
At 4:30 tomorrow morning, I'm going to say, I'm going to call John Hauser up and wake him up.
I've done that.
Because I'm up. Okay? So, you remember that when that phone rings tomorrow morning.
You don't have to answer, John.
You don't have to answer, John. What do I need to do to, one, change it to 250 at their max going over for that amendment? Do we have to make a motion on that, since this is a discussion item on the agenda? Do I need a motion?
I think, well, I think what you can do in this case is that if the motion to approve is going to be made, is that, my computer died a while ago, I don't remember what the exact language of the suggested motion is, but if, when you make the motion for approval of amending the PUD to allow an additional X number of units, simply put in whatever number it is we'd like to do. If that's 250, then the motion ought to be that I would, you know, move to amend the PUD agreement to allow for an additional 250 units. Simple as that, I believe.
Okay.
No objections from Mr. Norris or Mr. Longmore?
Okay. Does anybody want to make that motion?
In the matter of the concept site plan number CSP 21-0202, I got to put my glasses back on. First Colony, PUD 5, having a motion to change density?
Again, if Mr. Sinclair...
Or unit density?
Total number of units.
Total number of units. Total number of units.
Mr. Longmore handed me the sample.
There we go.
Say, in the matter of minor PUD amendment number text 22-0007, First Colony, PUD, Pod 5, having accepted the information provided by the applicant in the staff report and having made a finding that the objections of Section 44.4.4.4b of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance have been met, and noting that the reference project has met all requirements for approval, I move that this minor PUD amendment to add 250 residential units to the PUD for the exclusive use of Pod 5 be approved. Would be the motion.
I accept that motion.
No, no. This is total.
Howard, what do we need to do?
Sure.
Yeah.
I'm not sure, I, the way you worded that, you said you're adding it.
Right.
To the PUD. I'm not sure that's the correct way to say that.
The total should be...
The total should be...
Total, are we, total ought to be 250?
Allocate.
Allocate, yes. But we're doing 250 instead of 291.
Yeah, but it's an add.
I will say, I did not write this sample motion.
Don't throw somebody under the bus, Howard.
It does say add, but the add is incorrect.
If the goal here is...
Add, yeah, that's okay, we'll change that.
I think Mr. Norris's suggestion to just strike add replace with the word to allocate 250...
Correct.
Yeah, would be fine. I think the other thing too, is I think everybody on board...
Okay, do you accept that?
Any question about interpreting this?
No, I don't.
I think it's pretty clear, the record we're setting right here, what we are trying to do with this amendment right here.
They had, what they had before was they could build 160, let me get my little cheat sheet back up. There was 160 left in the PUD.
PUD, yeah.
So, we are moving that up to 250, and that titles them to build out their corner there. They had asked for 291. We're not going to give them that. We're only going to give them the 250. That encompasses the 233 that they need and 17 more if, for whatever reason, the restaurant doesn't work out or whatever, that gives them the ability to take that, those spots and to use them, utilize them as housing units.
So, that motion covers that?
I think the motion, and then again, with the well-suggested amendment to just strike that word add replace with the word allocate, I think gets the message across clear, that we're talking about a maximum of 250 units.
That motion is on the staff report for the amendment on the first page at the bottom. And as you say, take out the add and have it as allocate 250. That's what they had asked for before.
Even tighten up a little further to say, well, just to allocate a maximum 250 residential units.
It remains here.
Joe, did you hear that? If you want to keep making the motion, Mr. Sinclair, excuse me.
I'm trying to find it.
Hmm?
That's what.
That's what it's been about all along.
Oh, hell.
That's the wrong staff report.
Let me go back. You got it on front of yours?
Yeah.
Pull it up.
All right.
You can make that.
Mr. Hall, you want to make this motion?
Yes.
I know you voted against the project, but you know, in the...
Roger that.
Roger that.
All right, in the matter of minor PUD amendment, text 22007, 0007, First Colony, PUD, Pod 5, having accepted the information provided by the applicant in the staff report and having made the finding that the objectives of Section 44.4.4.4b of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance have been, have been met, and nothing that the reference project has, oh, noting, excuse me, noting that the reference project has met all requirements for approval, I move that this minor PUD amendment to allocate 250 residential units to the PUD for the exclusive use of Pod 5 be approved.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hall, a second by Ms. Robrick, okay. Mr. Physikus?
Nay.
Mr. Van Kirk?
Aye.
Ms. Robrick?
Aye.
Mr. Hall? Mr. Sinclair?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
And also vote aye. Okay. Once again, take good care of us, folks. We'll be keeping, we'll be keeping an eye on, any other business this evening?
No.
Okay. Accept a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
It should be what?
I don't think in principle...
Need a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Okay. Okay, thank you. Good adjourn.